We'll call the March 3rd City Council meeting to order. We have, Commissioner Banksen is going to give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day.
Let's start our heads together. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this again, a beautiful day, this spring. Father, we ask you to bless us here in the city. As we do the city's business, we ask you to give us wisdom and grace in all of our decisions. Give us clarity in our thought. Father, we also lift up at this time, these two of our employees that are fighting against cancer. We ask you, Father, give them encouragement and strength in their body and their will. Give their caretakers, their doctors, and all those that minister to them wisdom and grace in all that they do, and continue to give us advancement, Father, upon all of these things. Father, we also lift up Michael Rodriguez to you as he has been diagnosed with the COVID. Father, we thank you that you caused him to overcome and be with us again soon. We thank you, Father, for a good day, in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the fact of the day, on March 3rd, 1931, President Herbert Hoover signed a congressional act making the Star Spangled Banner the official national anthem of the United States. The Star Spangled Banner was composed by Francis Scott Key on September 14th, 1814, after witnessing the British bombardment of Fort McHenry in Maryland as part of the War of 1812. He watched the massive assault up close while being detained on a British ship and was amazed that the fort's flag survived the siege. The Star Spangled Banner was considered the national anthem by most of the branches of the military during the 19th century, but was not formally designated as such until President Woodrow Wilson signed an executive order in 1916. March 1931, Congress passed an act confirming President Wilson's presidential order, and President Hoover signed it into law on March 3rd, 1931.
Okay. Approval of minutes. Any changes, corrections? I had one little Scribner's error on the, Susan, on the workshop on page 10. It said really feeding people, I'm sure it meant feeding. So it's in the one, two, third paragraph about midway through under Commissioner Banksen's comments. So just a Scribner's error there. If not, look for a motion to approve the minute, says Red.
So move.
motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Edward?
Yes, Mayor, there is a change to the agenda. Presentation number two, item two, the economic development website has been pushed, Abbott is requesting that we push that to the next meeting. That presentation to the next meeting.
Okay, so when we get to there, we'll just take it up and move it? Or do you want to just?
Since it's not an action item there, you can just get.
Okay. All right. Guess, were we ready to go? Come on up, Chief, Chief and Jeremiahus and... Jerry, you coming up?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. I had the privilege to present a fine young man today who probably needs no introduction, Mr. Jeremiahus Williams. As we all know, he was a contestant recently on American Idol. His American Idol journey began long before the video you're getting ready to see. He's been through thousands upon thousands of contestants that tried out via Zoom call. You know, things were a little different with the pandemic this year, so they had to do things a little bit differently, but met with producer after producer and eventually narrowed down to the few select people that actually got to travel to California to be in front of the judges. So that is an amazing accomplishment in within itself. But more importantly, before the video, I want to say a few things. Kind of pre-warned him, but we had a conversation the other day, just me and him, and I kind of want to bring it up because I think it's just a testament to his character and his, who Jeremiahus is. And anyone who's been around him for longer than five minutes knows his character and knows his resolve. We're talking about a couple of different things in the airing of the show coming up, and he looked at me and said, you know, "Chief, I don't want to be..." And he's looking for the right word. I'm like, "What? You know, talk to me." "I don't want to be like a burden." And I looked, just taken back, I said, "A burden?" You know, what I want you to understand... And I honestly was taken back because... And I answered him shortly, but I want to say it more publicly now. "Maya, do you know what you represent? It's not just your God-given talent that separates you from the rest. It's decided, it's what you did with what you had that makes you truly special. You've come with this experience with a desire to encourage others, to use this platform and to turn around and help the next person and provide hope to others. My friend, that is not a burden. That is a blessing and an true inspiration. This young man has represented himself, his family, his extended family, the Apopka Fire Department, the fire service as a whole, and our community on our international platform with the right attitude and character that we should all aspire to. We are extremely proud of Jeremiahus, not only for his accomplishment, but the incredible example that he has shown to all of us and truly lives by. That's the most important thing. So remember that. Very proud of you." Well, if we were to do...
I'm Jeremiahus Williams and I'm from Apopka, Florida, and I bench press about 300 pounds. No, just kidding.
Tell us about yourself.
Oh, I grew up in Apopka. I have a big family and, you know, my parents, you know, they've been working hard all my life. They've actually, my dad's 80 currently.
Wow.
Yeah, he had me at about 56, 57.
Oh, wow.
So it was pretty tough growing up. I grew up with eight of my siblings, my parents, and then my two nephews, makes 13 people in the house. And it was a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house. We grew up severely underprivileged. The house was actually pretty filthy. Trash and, you know, clothes and stuff.
I think it's missing a little of that smoke. It's missing a couple, you know, it's like, it's like a person missing its shadow. You got to find it a little bit more. I think that you could, if you found that, it would be something really powerful.
Given the right moments to play with.
Yes, sir.
And put that confidence to your voice and not running up those stairs to the fire.
Yes, sir.
You might be able to have something because there's a lot in there.
Yeah, Lionel's saying, I mean, you have a really nice voice. I mean, it's got a sweetness and tenderness to it, but I just don't know if you've thrown the dart and hit the bull's eye with what your voice is yet.
Yes, sir.
I think it's not yet for me.
I am going to, it's going to be enough for me this trip around, but I want to see you back here.
Thank you.
Seriously.
Yeah, it's enough for me. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, guys.
You got a sweet spirit, man.
Nice guy.
Gosh, sweetheart.
I didn't get a golden ticket, but I couldn't be here if it weren't for you guys' support and help. I love each and every single one of y'all. I'm super excited to get home to you guys and get back to doing the job I feel I was destined to do, and that's being a firefighter.
A group of special needs kids actually came to the station this morning on a shuttle bus, and they brought me some personal cards they made, you know, thanking me, you know, for inspiring them. And they also brought me my own golden ticket that they made for me, that they autographed on the back saying, "Thank you for being my American Idol." And I just thank you guys for letting me be your American Idol. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. You do know that we've got a concert coming up on the 10th? And we've got, we've got three acts prior to Brittany Callahan coming on stage. Any way we can maybe convince you to lead us out, be our entry into the concert?
That's definitely something I'd be interested in doing.
We, yes.
I, so with American Idol, I signed a lot of like, you know, stuff, you know, with confidentiality and stuff like that. And a lot of it came, you know, where, you know, if you're interviewed on a radio or the news and stuff like that, you can't sing yet. So I would have to get with, you know, producers, obviously, and make sure that I'm good now to do that. But that's definitely something I'd love to do. I'd be happy to do it.
Okay, that's April 10th, 3 o'clock.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you. Thank you, City Council. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? First of all, Maya, you're a much prettier ugly crier than I am. So you did a fantastic job. And my youngest daughter Lucy was, we watched the show together as a family, and she was just inconsolable after the show. She was rooting for you so hard, and I think everybody is. And you stole my line, I was getting ready to say, is, you know, your golden ticket was on that video board when you walked back out, right? And so your family, that you have the support here, like me cry, we love you.
Thank you.
Proud of you.
Absolutely.
Well, you know what I told you? Have I been trying to convince my friends from New York that Apopka exists? And I got so many texts that night with friends from New York, "Is this your city? Is this your city?" So you actually just showed not just us here in Apopka, but everyone around the world. And I was so excited because we love you. I just, you know, we just adore you, and your story is just so powerful. And you will keep inspiring. You will keep inspiring.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we all get a chance to say something. I'll tell you what, since the day I met you, it's, what the chief said is exactly true. There's something very special about you. And your faith and your service just shine through. That badge shines brighter than any gold ticket. But, you know, what they said was very true. I've been around music all my life, and what they said was so true. There's something very special in your voice. I'm just glad we get you for at least another year around here before you take off. But we're all very proud of you. Thank you for representing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that condensation is kind of getting around the room a little bit.
It's really cold in here. It's just the condensation for my eyes.
And I just want to say that everybody, I believe, around the country was sitting and waiting for you to come on. And I mean, they turned on the TVs at the beginning of the show, and nobody would even move until you came on the show. And received phone calls from all over everywhere. And I have had the opportunity to talk to several of your teachers from elementary all the way through high school, and they talk about the gentleman that you are. And we can tell by your humble spirit that it's inside of you, and we want you to know that Apopka is very proud of you and what you have done for our city and what you contribute to our city. So keep doing what you're doing, remain with a humble person that you are. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremiahus.
Thank y'all. Okay, the economic development website is going to be put off to the next council meeting, Edward. So we're, we thought we'd have it, but we hadn't quite got there. I think we'll have something to look at in the next week or so, and it'll definitely be on the next meeting's agenda. Okay, we're at the point where we've got public comment, Susan?
So, Scott Dooley.
My name is Scott Dooley, and I live in Apopka. And I watched the last meeting online.
Can you give your address, please, just for the record?
I'd actually really not like to give that out right now. I wrote it down.
Okay, so we've got it somewhere. That's fine, perfect. Okay.
I watched the last meeting regarding the homeless center, and I don't agree with it. And I come from a different angle. When COVID hit in March last year, I was hospitalized. And because everybody was panicked, I had nowhere to go. And I lived in my truck for four months in a Walmart parking lot. There is a homeless problem here. Don't get me wrong. But it's the bigger problem. It's a drug problem, not homeless. And all this city is doing right now is making the problem worse and not better. Okay? It's not a city's problem. Some people made bad choices, and that's why they're there. Some people are there because they didn't have an option. That's where I felt. I didn't have anywhere to go. I couldn't go anywhere because nobody would be around because I was in the hospital when COVID hit, and everybody was freaking out. So I lived in my truck in the parking lot of Walmart from March to July. I'm a single dad. Now, I don't have that problem now, but the services that are offered at the churches, everybody knows what those are. Having that building to redirect everybody again, to me, is a waste of money. If you're not going to address the real problem of teaching these people or training these people or helping these people get clean, it's just a waste of money. I used to take food after this to homeless people every night with my daughter. And she started feeling sorry for them, and I said, "Wait, don't feel sorry for them because this is a choice they've made. Most of them are here because of drugs, not because they're homeless." So we sat in front of stores and watched these people steal, beg, borrow, whatever they could do. And I use that as a learning tool for my daughter because she feels bad every time she sees, "Oh, Dad, we got to give them money. We got to give them money." That's the worst thing you can do. When they want clothes, you give them clothes, they go sell the clothes. Why? Because they don't need the clothes. They're trying to find their alcohol or their drug. I know a majority of the people that are on the streets in this town, and it's a, it's a crime. It's really a crime because they work in groups. I've never seen so many homeless people I know drive $200 bicycles and have cell phones. Those are not homeless people. Those are people taking advantage of a situation. They get clothes, they sell them. They're not wearing them. They get free haircuts. They take advantage of the situation. And all we're doing as a city, if we add another 150 grand, people are going to continue to keep coming in. I'm watching them come in every day from different parts of the city, from other cities. And we're becoming a homeless center, just like the city of Austin did when I was living there, just like San Francisco's doing. And it's not a city's problem. It's not. You know, who is going to fund, who's going to pay the insurance? It's too close to schools. Why do we want needles and stuff like that around that environment? I'd like to see nice restaurants come to this town, but they won't because you can't even go get gas without being bombarded at least two or three times while you're pumping gas, day or night. Day or night. And like I said, I know these people because I was around it. There's a gentleman who's been in a Walmart parking lot for 18 months, gets $800 a month in social security, goes to each one of the churches every day to get his free stuff. I ask him, "Why?" He goes, "Where do I need to go? I have, I'm here, I can stay here, nobody's doing anything, I get everything for free." And he just stacks his money up. That's a homeless person. He doesn't do drugs. He's just comfortable in that life now. That's what he's got. So I'm against the city spending that kind of money. I'd rather see them beautify town instead of pushing it a different direction.
Thank you.
Can I just say something about Scott, how I met Scott? Scott is a...
This isn't...
A disabled, I know, but you're a disabled veteran, and it broke my heart to learn that he had lived in his truck for four months. And that's who we should be helping, is homelessness as he is. And that's how I came to meet Scott.
There was a gentleman that worked at Wawa Graveyards.
Yeah.
Living in his car in the Cosby parking lot. But Wawa employed him. He found out he had cancer, colon cancer, which is the same kind of cancer I have. And I helped him get all kinds of help at the hospital. And he ended up passing away, but nobody was there to help him. But he did it on his own, and that's the kind of people we should be helping.
We should be helping.
Not the people that are looking for their next fix.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what the centers will do, is it's trying to find the resources. It's not, we're not handing out money. We're not, obviously, we're not, we're not, we're trying to do a hand up, not a hand out.
I understand what you're saying, but there's nothing new that that service is going to do that the churches aren't already doing.
Well, what it's trying to do is coordinate those efforts so that this church doesn't give food the same day this church gives food.
But do you need a $150,000 building to do that? I mean, no joke, but I took a picture of a sign, and it said, "Today, food being distributed at 12:30 to 2:30."
Right.
I mean, that's, to me, that's a heck of a lot cheaper than $150,000. I'll even donate the first 10 signs. But I don't think we need a building to coordinate, to tell people to go where they already know they're going. They already are going there. They already know that. I just think there's 150,000 reasons that the city could use, especially in a pandemic, especially when our revenues are even lower than they used to be, rather than doing something that's already being done.
Yeah, you know, I really appreciate your remarks because that, to me, is more the heart of why I was more moved towards support when I talked with what they're doing because exactly what you said, many churches are doing these things, but others don't know what each other is doing. And part of the goal of that was the accountability factor to make sure that we're not just feeding a problem, but really, really reaching the ones who really have the genuine need, who aren't there by their own choice, but those who really have a reach out. So, you know, but I really take all of your comments to heart and have still been mulling, is this the best route to go? But having been in that situation and trying to work with others to say, "Hey, this one, I believe, is just gaming the system. We need to communicate with each other." That was what more excited me about this possibility, was that it would stop some of the abuses of that. But, I mean, you're speaking directly from being there, so your words are taken.
I think it's going to draw you to have more people coming here because they're going to feel like it's a homeless, thankful, sort of city.
Yeah, and that's, that's the very thing that we want to curb, so.
So, I mean, so to, and it's admirable, and somebody would be like, "Oh, he's against homeless people." I'm not against homeless people. Okay? I've been there, I've done that. Okay? But I, there's help, but I don't think this, at this time, is the right help. I think that money could be used far better, helping other people better than, again, I think majority of the homeless isn't homeless, it's a drug problem or an alcohol problem.
I appreciate your comments, and I can see your passion about what you're saying. But I think that what we're missing is, is that this is not just going to be a place for homeless people to come, but also those individuals that are unemployed, those individuals that need mental health counseling. So it's going to be a place to staff the individuals that's able to provide the resources that these people need in order to get them to the next level. And we're not going to be able to save everybody, but I think by having all the resources in one place and having people to qualify, to do the work in this one place, it's going to be a big asset to help get rid of, help some individuals that are actually looking for help. Because even at our church, we give out food, but there are other people that come for other sorts, other resources that we cannot provide because we don't have mental health counseling. We don't know where all the jobs are located. So in this one place, it's going to be those resources to help these individuals to move to the next level. And like the mess, it's not going to be a handout, but it's going to be a hand up. And that's what we're trying to do in order to help to get people to the point where they really want to be. And some of them want to move, but they don't know how or don't know where to go. And then there are others that will just milk the system. But I think what the way we're looking at it is in a positive way, that we're going to be able to provide those resources they need for those that want to, to get to the next level and provide the services that the church cannot provide.
My point to this, though, is if 25 out of 100 people are looking for the help, that really want to help, and the 75 people are just playing the game, is it really helping?
Well, we're not going to help those 75. That's the whole point.
But how do you know? Because that's what, that's what this town's full of right now. Out of every 100, I guarantee you 15 to 20 may be homeless. The rest of them don't want, you go through a drive-through, and they're like, "I'm hungry. I handed somebody food." He goes, "I'm allergic to beef." I'm like, "Well, that's no problem. I got chicken nuggets." And you're like, "Well, I can't have the breading." It's not they don't want food, they want money. And they're going to sell whatever you give them to get that. I've watched it.
But that's not the only clientele that we're going to be targeting, is what I was saying.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm just trying to tell you that if there's 300 homeless people in this town, 50 of them are really truly homeless.
Correct. That's the 50 we want to help.
So, and really, I mean, I made my comments clear during the workshop, and Scott, thanks for coming and speaking publicly on it, using your point of view. But really, I mean, at this stage, it's not formally been presented to us yet, so I'm assuming we'll get those levels of detail on how they'll curb some of that, I guess? I don't know. You know, when we're presented for the actual funding request, at this point, we haven't gotten anything from them, so.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else, Susan? You want to wait till the presentation?
Thanks, Rich. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Next up, let's see, consent agenda. Any of those items need to be pulled? If not, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, business action item, Oak Point, Bobby.
Good afternoon, Bobby Hall, Planning Manager. The Oak Point project is...
The Oak Point project is composed of two developments consisting of Oak Point North, and which is being developed with multifamily commercial uses, and Oak Point South, which is being developed with single-family residential and townhome uses. On April 18th, 2018, the center, city entered into a development agreement for the development of the Oak Point project. The agreement was amended and restated on July 3rd, 2019. The developer is seeking to amend the amended and restated agreement to remove the Oak Point North project from the overall Oak Point development and create a standalone development agreement for Oak Point North, and then a standalone agreement for Oak Point South, which will regulate the two developments with two separate development agreements. The Development Review Committee recommends approval and staff recommends approval. And staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated development agreement for Oak Point North and the creation of new development agreements.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, uh, let's see, Amendment Number Two to the Agreement to St. John's Water Management.
Mayor, we've skipped, uh, Item Two, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Pam, I'm sorry.
Pam, I don't think it's on there.
I don't have a presentation. But everything that I was going to show is in your package. This is a request to enter into a three-party agreement between the city, 1520, uh, Orange Blossom, uh, West Orange Blossom LLC and Crosby Motor Inn LLC. The purpose of this agreement is in large part for the developer who's making a large investment, acquiring a easement from the Crosby Motor Inn so there can be cross-access on that side of the road. Mr. Crosby is generously giving us for free an easement. In return, he doesn't want to help pay for the intersection improvement. So everybody's paying for their part. Our part is to design and realign the intersection, install mast arms and provide, and install a protected westbound left turn lane. So, um, the request is to ask you to approve this agreement so we can all go forward. And I, I would add that this is going to remove that lovely billboard that sits around the Crosby property permanently.
Yes. Any questions for Pam? Yeah, thank, thanks for all your hard work. It's been, it's been several months and I know, uh, Mr. Rodriguez and Pam and the team have all kind of worked together. It's going to make it a nice, you know, intersection, four-way, in and out. So I think it'll help that whole area, you know, get through the intersection.
Is that going to help on the, coming out from Arrol on that side to, to be able to have a designated line for?
It's going to function as a, a proper four-way
Okay.
intersection with all the appropriate movements. I think when we, when we do that coming out of Arrol, we're going to go ahead and stripe the, the, you know, right now, it's, it looks like one lane and it's a free-for-all, but we're going to get that striped appropriately. So you have a, a turn lane, then you'll have a, a through, um, right. Add that, you know, if you're trying to turn into Crosby, if you're heading, uh, west or to the, the Mexican restaurant, you can send through two cycles of that light. DOT won't acknowledge there's a problem, but we acknowledge it.
And that's a great restaurant. It's worth the wait, but I'm glad we're going to have a lane.
Popular as it's become, it's, um, yeah.
Yeah, you kind of race through that, uh, left turn because I, I don't think there's a left turn signal there.
There's, there's a turn lane, but there's not a signal. It's not, you're, you're kind of on your own end.
Yes.
Oftentimes, people run the red light. They sit there and wait and wait. And then they just say, I'm going, and, and that's a dangerous situation.
Any, any other questions for Pam? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, I look for a motion to approve the Intersection Improvement Agreement for 1520 West Orange Blossom LLC and Crosby's Motor Inn.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next up, Jeff, Amendment to St. John's Water Management.
Good afternoon, Jeff Weatherford, Public Services Director. Today, I'm bringing to you the Second Amendment to the Agreement between St. John's Water Management District and City of Apopka for the, um, Distributed Waste Water Treatment System, um, project we have. Uh, that the original agreement came to the council, um, September 17th in 2018, uh, that in September of last year, September 9th, we came back with the First Amendment. And that's when the mayor dragged me kicking and screaming into this project. Uh, since then, we've made a lot of progress in the project. We've had public meetings with, with the community in Wakaw, Wakawaglen, and we've actually started the process. And hopefully later on this month, we'll be installing, installing the first units. What this amendment does, it does three major things. First, um, the product's been called the, um, the Camp Thunderbird Subject to Distribute a Sewer Retrofic Project. We're going to change the name to be what it really is since Camp Thunderbird is no longer involved. It's going to change the name to the, um, uh, City of Apopka, um, DWTS, um, Conversion Project. Second item is the contract we have with, um, St. John's is due to expire March 31st. This will extend it, um, to September 30th, so we've got time to finish the projects. We've got, we've got it underway. And the final issue is, um, the cost share. That when we originally set this up, we set it up based on a $10,000 unit cost. Along the way, I said, so, okay, the units cost $10,000. What's it cost to actually put it in the ground? Well, another $4,295. So the total cost of the units is $14,295 per unit installed. The original agreement with St. John's called for a 75-25 split with their 75% not to exceed $7,500. This removes that limit and puts it back to a 75-25 split, um, so that the share is in balance again. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we're asking that you authorize city administrator to execute Amendment Two to this agreement.
Any questions for Jeff?
The only questions I would have, extending the date, same terms, outside of just cleaning up the, the cost share.
Yes, sir.
And one thing I want to add is, looks like March 19th, 2 o'clock, we're going to be installing our first, um, Distributed Waste Water System.
Third, but, you know.
So, um, we'll, we'll get you out the details. We're, we're inviting, uh, the head of DEP, obviously, Ann Chortel from St. John's Water Management and some other dignitaries that, because I think this is pretty exciting. You know, we're cutting-edge technology that we want to be, you know, we want to, we're proud of and want people to be, you know, available when we're, we're putting the first one in, so, anyway.
Would you ever imagine those words coming out of your mouth, Mary, cutting-edge technology when we're talking about wastewater?
Uh, yes. Well, I, I've been dealing with that for, for quite a few years. So, yes, um, all right. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Now, we look for a motion to approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with the St. John's Water Management District for the Apopka ID WTS Conversion Project.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Jim Hitt.
Hi, I'm Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. Uh, this item is something that, uh, we had seen before. It had to do with the sale bid offer for the North Park Avenue Sandpiper Street parcel that was previously advertised, uh, previously turned down because the bids came in too low. We had no real idea what was going to be going on for the property itself. The overall acreage is, uh, 8.45 acres, but we needed a small cut, um, of road right-of-way in order to realign Sandpiper, uh, street from east to west, uh, across Park Avenue. So the total acreage ended up being, uh, cut down to just a hair over eight acres, but it's 8.093 acres. So it was declared surplus back in, uh, February 2017. And like I mentioned, it'd gone out to bid twice before. Uh, we had one bid that the person backed out and then we rebid it and bids came in below what the bid recommendation was to have come in at least at the appraised value. And the appraised value was 1.2675, um, million. So it was a good chunk of, uh, good chunk of change, but it's a really good piece of property. It's already got, uh, commercial land use and it's got, uh, commercial zoning also. And water and sewers accessible, and we're looking to put a light in at Sandpiper. So whoever gets that would end up having a share cost, you know, regarding the traffic light, of course, too. Uh, a little bit further down in the future. So we re-advertised this, uh, went out to bid on the city's website, January 28th of this year. And we allowed for three weeks, which was discussed when we were talking about going out to bid. We ended up getting two bids and they're actually the same bidders they came in, uh, before. However, the first one, um, as your packet mentions, is, uh, basically, it, it comes in as, uh, let me go to that pace, uh, Terminus Realty, uh, and that came in at 1.3 million. The next one was, uh, Dr. and Mrs. Argawal, and that came in at 1 million. We did get some extra background information from, uh, Mr. Edinger in regards to what he's planning to do. He had submitted a, a, a concept plan that, um, Avid Engineering had done, but it was not part of the packet, so I did not include that. He didn't want that to include because they're, they're still playing with the different ideas of what they'd like to do. But I did put a, uh, a leaflet that he emailed me, uh, this morning on your, uh, on your, uh, desk area. And basically, he's looking, one of the concepts that he was looking at doing was a restaurant with a dog park, um, which was kind of an interesting type of concept. You know, how many times you have animals and you want to be able to go out to lunch or dinner or something, but you can't go because you have your dog.
So it's a dog-friendly restaurant?
It is a dog-friendly restaurant.
Careful what you order.
Yeah.
Especially around my dog.
Um, but one of those, one of the, um, emails that he sent, it actually said, uh, the, what he was looking to mirror was something, it was called mutzcantina.com. And it, it looks phenomenal. But he's got some good ideas. He's definitely, obviously, he's, he's, he's done this type of project before as a real estate agent and, and, and an investor. And he's looking to improve. He already knows that he can't do residential. He knows that he wants to, uh, be able to get some commercial of some sort in there. Um, I did send each of them, each of the bidders, their, uh, the others' contact information in case they could work together and possibly put in, uh, Dr. Um, Argawal had talked about putting in a medical office, his medical office there. So if they could work together and it, it might end up becoming the best of both worlds type thing. But we got a good opportunity. Like I said, it's, uh, 1.3 million dollars. The only caveat that I, that I did put in, and I changed this a little bit from the, the, what was in your packet, I said, should the first offer, uh, not be completed in accordance with the sale requirements? And he already mentioned that he wanted to close within 30 days, so I think he wants to get rolling on this quick. Um, the city council may allow staff to complete the sale for the second bidder if you wanted to go to that lower amount, which was below the appraised value. Even in, in, as part of the packet, one of the things that, if you took out that, uh, small portion for the road right-of-way, the appraised value would still end up, uh, being a little over 1.2 million. And that, that second bid came in at a million, so, um, it's nothing to sneeze at, but, uh, but we've got a, I think we got a good opportunity this, uh, this go-around.
Cool. Any questions for Jim?
Just, again, just along the lines of when do we think that intersection will be able to be worked on? I know we're working with the long-term and Welch and all those things, but there is a lot of backup there, especially at the end of the workday. And that will be a great help and relief and make it safer because there's...
Pam?
I don't think we're going to be able to do it in next fiscal year, but possibly we can get it designed in the following fiscal year and then, um...
So '22, '23? Yeah, we're in '21, '22.
Yeah, we, we probably can get it designed in '22 and then constructed in '23. You know, unless something comes up and, um, we collect a whole lot of impact fees and we can get it advanced. But that's where I see it right now.
Well, hopefully, the economy comes roaring back as we emerge from COVID and we'll be able to move that, uh, quicker. But, uh, yeah, well, I really like the idea and I know my boxer and Yorkie will enjoy the idea as well. So, interesting. I, I'd love to see them be able to work together. That'd be great, but that's up to them.
Anybody else?
Yeah, more, uh, questions I had posed on Monday. I mean, obviously, my preference would be to take the higher amount, especially as we segue into the next piece of business or on our agenda. But my question circulated around the, or centered around the purchase agreement and what limitations we as the council have the ability to, um, prevent from being on that site. And when I say that, I mean, the unholy trinity, uh, that people in Apopka have come to know, right? The dollar stores, auto parts stores and fast food restaurants. Now, fast food, that's a different beast because there's quick-service restaurants that people actually do enjoy that would like to see come to Apopka. But with the dollar store and auto parts store, there's already a, a number of them going north from that location. And I saw that there was another dollar store application going through the process a little bit north of there, so that scares me. What I don't want to have happen is we sell the City of Apopka one, a piece of property that immediately comes in, it's one of those two uses. That would be a deal breaker for me. So is there some way that we can?
I have an answer.
And if it's the will of the council, obviously, this is my one opinion.
I have an answer for you.
Okay.
I, uh, I did bring that up to Mr. Edinger and he said, I'm okay with restricting dollar stores. I wouldn't do that anyway. It sets a negative tone for the project. So he, he's already, he, he knows that we don't want that and he would put that in the, uh, purchase agreement, so.
So I just want to add...
Is it possible to add auto parts?
Auto parts store?
I can, I can talk to him about it. I was thinking the same thing. We've already got, I, I think just that area alone already has the three main dollar-style stores. I don't know if there's a fourth one yet, but...
And two auto parts stores.
Yeah, and then, and then we've got, um, Riley Auto Parts just north of that. But, uh, but I can talk to him about that part.
So do you, can we make a, a motion to accept the, the bid with the, the additional caveat that we don't have, uh, that there will not be an auto parts and/or, uh, the, uh...
Dollar stores?
Dollar-type store?
Yeah.
And from a legal interpretation, I mean, if you've got to put a parameter around what an auto parts store is, what I'm after is the one that's solely for that use. Obviously, there's auto parts that could potentially be sold in like a convenience store or a gas station that might go on that property. But that's the spirit of what I'm after.
Members of the commission, it's Michael. I'm actually here. You can put a restrictive covenant or some restrictions on the deed to restrict the types of uses on the property, and that'll run with the land.
Ah, you sound good, Michael.
You do.
I'm trying. I got just enough energy to get through this council meeting, so.
Okay, so, um...
I kind of, I kind of learned that at P&amp;Z, you can't put restrictions.
We can because we're selling it.
Yeah.
They said can.
Did he say can or can't?
Cannot, you can have restrictions on the property. They, you, you can sell the property and put restrictions on the deed as to certain uses that the property cannot be used for. And it can even be such that if they, if they use them, I mean, if you want to include a reverter clause, that if they use them, or if they, anytime in the future, they want to try to have those deleted because there's certain changes, it'll have to come back to the commission for such a change. But you can have restrictive covenants on the deed to prohibit specific uses on the site.
Yeah, you just can't do restrictive on zoning.
Oh, okay.
That's the difference.
The zoning.
Yep.
Okay.
And not to sound like a broken record, but again, across the street from there, that, uh, the dormant Circle K, it just, it's an eyesore and it, it brings the value of, you know, our Park Avenue look down. So anything we can do to continue to move that forward, I'm all for.
That property owner actually owns both that lot and the one behind it. And they, they've got a, a, what, a really good opportunity to, to, to get an investor to actually put something in there that's good. But we just can't convince them to actually invest.
Okay. So anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Now, we'll bring it back and look for a motion to approve with the two conditions, no dollar parts store, dollar stores and auto parts stores.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Edward.
So I think this is the item of the day. This one has, like...
So I think this is the item of the day, this one has, I think, is the, the big item. So I guess let me first kind of tell you how, how we want to present this item. First of all, I want to say that the, this business item today was, there was a lot of hard work put into this, this item. There's a lot of staff involved in this item, and today you're going to hear from some of them with all the information that we've gathered and everything that we've put together. We've worked very, very hard, they've done a really good job, put in a lot of hours and a lot of time, and I think you're going to, the information that you have before you will show you that we've done our due diligence on this, on this item. So in your packet, on Camp Weewah, as you know, we've applied for a grant, the grant required that we get two appraisals. You have both of those appraisals in your packet. One of those appraisals came in at 5.96 million, the other appraisal came in right at 5 million dollars. Some of the information that, that I'm going to let Brian give you some information from an operating standpoint on the camp, that he has put some projections together. He has a presentation to show you that you can see some of the operating, how the operating would work if the, the city was to purchase this, or purchase this property, or this park, or this camp. So he'll give you some operating. We have Nicole is here as well, she's the one that has worked through the grant, so if you have some questions with the grant, she can give you some information on that. She's here to give some information on that if you need it. And then Richard, our city engineer, has done an analysis that, that you have, and he can present that as well, going through the parcel to show you flood, some of the flood plain, some of the issues that he has worked through as a city engineer when it comes to the, to the value of the land. There's also been, though, that information was shared with the appraisal, with the appraisers, and there was a, one of the appraisals, one of the corrections that you have, one of the, the second appraiser made an adjustment to their report of about $800,000. So their, their revised appraisal is showing at about 4.2 million with that adjustment. And again, Richard will be able to give you that information, so you can see where, where that number is coming from, so you have that information. I'm trying to think, what I want to do, what I'd like to do is let, let Brian do his portion, and then Richard do his, you know, give you that information. And then if there's any other questions, Nicole's here as well to answer any questions that you may have on the grant side of it. And then I can come back and finish up, and, and we can entertain any questions that you have, comments, concerns, and direction. So with that, I'll let Brian give you his, his portion from the operating side and the improvements that we make on this property if we were to purchase it.
Got to get it right on the, there we go. Yeah, just the arrows there.
All right, so it's going to show up darker than I hoped, but. Obviously, I gave you guys detail on financial projections through fiscal year 2026, so this is, this just summarizes the information that I, that I gave you guys. So this is 2021, which is this current fiscal year, because we get it, we got to, we still have, we still have money to spend. So pool contract, the Apopka High School has been using, utilizing the pool in the fall for their fall season. They've been giving the Y $3,500 a season to do that, so that's where that, that revenue would come from. Staff and contractors, $55,000, general maintenance, $75,000, and then that's a net of minus $126,500. And then capital expenses, we need ADA improvements, we need immediate basketball court, because we need to rebuild it because it's completely unsafe. So that would have to be done, that's this year. Next year, adding camp and more facility use to the, to the space, and then staff and maintenance. We're looking at almost $300,000 loss, and then infrastructure improvements. And then the pool, and I wanted to mention, I know I've mentioned to you, to most of you, the pool that's there is usable, but it's, it's five feet deep. So it's usable for lap swim, it's usable for the high school to use, it's usable for adults to come and lap swim. As, as a pool for youth and seniors to use, it's not, it's not really a viable option. So we would propose that we add a pool to that facility that youth and seniors could, could use, and then it, there is no playground there, and so that would be a great feature to add to the property. In 2023, in camp, facility use, contract revenue, and then the operating expenses for camp staff, and, and equipment and supplies and trips, and then facility staff and contractors, and then maintenance, looking at $250,000 loss. And then, again, infrastructure, pool, playground, and infrastructure, that sewer and water is, is a lot of that infrastructure part. Trying to get on city sewer and city water. And then for 2024, see camp, facility use, so, you know, a lot of rentals with the dining hall, the pavilion. And then as we increase, then, you know, increase usage, we, we do better with, with our additions to the, to the property, then we have more money but coming in and more expenses going out. So it comes to a net of minus $191,000, and then capital is continuing, but the capital's going down because we've already done a lot of upgrades. So $325,000 in capital finishing off the pool, adding pavilions and other upgrades to cabins and dining hall and things like that. And then 2025, we're coming down to a net operating deficit of 88,000, and then upgrades to general facilities and finishing up on the pavilions. And then as we get to 2026, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at basically breaking even, million dollars each, about a million dollars each way. And over the course of the five years, $2 million in capital spent on the property. And that $2 million is currently designated in a five-year plan for the park on Harmon Road that we would be, that's, we would try to sell that property anyway, so that's in that area. So that's where that $2 million would be coming from, be shifted over to the Camp Weewah property. And long-term, I, if, you know, look in 10, 15, 20 years, this is how I look at this property is, you know, we want it to be an active place and a, and a popular place and something that adds value to the community. I'm looking at honestly, realistically, $100,000 either way. Like, if you're looking, I like to think along those lines, like as far as net operating revenue versus expense, some years might be $100,000 on the good, some years might be $100,000 on the bad, but that's kind of the range we're thinking. We're not going to, I don't think we're losing $500,000 a year on this property, we're not going to be making 500 a million either. So I mean, I just, just so we're in that mind frame of where this is, once we get through the first part, getting into the facilities, we know there's going to be, there's unknown opportunities out there for us to do better than this, and there's also unforeseen circumstances that could have us do worse. I mean, that's, you know, like when you buy a house and six months down the road, the air conditioner breaks on you, you don't, that stuff can happen. But there's going to be other opportunities, partnerships, sponsors that are going to come up that we don't, we don't have that accounted for yet or know that yet. So that's as far as, as far as financial picture going forward, that's, that's where I see this property.
Okay, questions? Mr. Blaskis?
I'm, I'm going to kind of yield to, kind of listen to the discussion, because I, I do have a few questions, but I will do that. If you could start at the other end.
Well, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Banksen.
All right, yeah, I've got several questions. One, what are we looking at as the asking price? I mean, is this based upon what the appraisals are, what, what is, how are we approaching? Is that some, okay, so we don't know right now?
I'm not, I'm.
That's.
That's in negotiation. Okay.
That's a different, that's a.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure we do the best, because this is the taxpayers' money, I want to make sure we're doing the best.
I'm doing, I'm doing the year in, year out, year in, year out operational costs.
So we keep the cards close to the vest, I got it.
So, yes.
Are these conservative estimates? When you're looking at the, the potential revenues, are these based upon conservative numbers? How did you come up with those numbers?
I think they're, I think they're fair, conservative numbers on, on revenue. I mean, you know, there's information from the Y, information from other municipalities, information from my 25 years' experience in the field, but it's conservative. Can we do better on some of these rentals and retreats? Absolutely. But I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to sit here and promise that right now.
Right, I just, I like leaning, leaning on the conservative side of that, it's always nice to have a nice surprise rather than.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're unrealistically low, but I, but they're certainly not unrealistically high.
Okay. What kind of marketing plan or strategy will we use to reach these numbers? Is this something where we'll now look to go to partnerships?
I think.
Other than that being all upon us, because, you know, government usually isn't best to get into business, but this is a service to our community that I, I think is a great one.
Yeah, and it's, you know, and it's another, it's an additional to the park, to what we do at, you know, at Northwest. It's about a quarter of the size of, of Northwest, it has different, it has different amenities than Northwest has, obviously, with, with the lakes and pool and the ability for the dining hall, which kind of goes in line, in line with, you know, VFW and Fran Carlton Center, and in that range, when you took about the dining hall. Pavilions, we already rent, but we have the chapel there, you know, so there's opportunities for weddings and, and other services to go on there, and to use the pavilion as, and the dining hall to go along with those things. So there's a lot of different opportunities, but as far as, you know, and I know Kelly left, Kelly's done a great job with Cindy and Carolyn in doing the marketing for what we do now, but certainly, everything's on the table as far as branding and marketing opportunities. And, yeah, I, you're right, we have to, we have to hit this, and we need, we need good branding. And when we get forward, when we have this built to the way we want it, we want to get retreats in there all the time, you know, corporate retreats to come in and rent it on the weekends and use the cabins and use the dining hall and the facilities and all that, and it's, the revenue's there. We need a good marketing plan to get, to get that word out, and have the people come from, have the people come from New York and, and come down and do their retreat down here. It's going to be a lot cheaper than going to Disney, so.
Well, and again, I'm sure the presentation, which is pushed to next week, will really help address that, because the Economic Development Committee with the chamber, that's one of the focuses. What's best about Apopka, so that'll be a great spotlight. Okay, the pool, that's, you know, I went again last night and just went out there by myself and walked around and looked at it, and, you know, that can be a big expense. And I appreciate your email to all of us, kind of more delineating. It answered a lot of this question to me, what are the expenses to make sure it's up to speed and able to be used? So then the other side of that would be the school contract that we have presently, is that competitive? Or is that an older price, does that need to be revisited, or?
That's, I mean, we can, we can look at that, I know that's what they've been paying the Y MCA. So that's, so it's not our contract, that's been something that they've, ongoing with the Y MCA, that's communication I've had directly with the school.
And you said the school has been using it, has the water polo team utilized that?
No, I think they've been going.
It's too cold, because it's the spring season, so they.
I know that, I had, had someone reach out to me about that, that they liked that idea for that possibility. There were funds that were collected here in the community several years ago when the original YMCA project was there, and I believe they were being held with the chamber. Are, do we know, are any of those funds available, were those distributed already?
No, no, they, they all went back, nobody, yeah, there was no monies.
Okay, I didn't know if there might be some there.
There were, there were promises, but not actual dollars that were.
Okay, just a couple more questions, and I'll, I'm trying to move along here for everybody, but how many acres are usable, buildable?
That'll be, Richard will be coming up next.
Okay, we'll get that info from him.
He's, he's more just the, the programming itself.
Okay, and then, so maybe you're not the one to ask this last question. The possible future plans, there's a lot of that land that is unutilized. Is there any, and maybe you've thought this through, as far as expanding the camp abilities? I mean, right now, it's, it's pretty good at what it has, but there just seems to be a lot of room down in the south that's really unused, and I don't know if there's.
I mean, where the high ropes course is, that's, that's underwater right now. And then they have the low ropes course there, there's the climbing wall there, so some of those things could be enhanced. I mean, it's, it's mostly wooded space. I think it would be nice if we could find, if we could designate an area, in my opinion, we haven't really had big conversations about this, but if we could find an area where we could put a field, even just an open flat field, not something that we would rent out as, you know, tournament play, but something that's a playing area, multipurpose softball, soccer, football.
Yeah, I think we were talking about, that would probably go up on the front where the, the check-in building is, would be north of that. There's, there's one area that doesn't have a lot of trees that we could put in a, a multipurpose field for soccer, you know, baseball or something, but, yeah.
Well, I just know about the southern, at least a third of that just seems to not really have much. And again, we want green space, we want, you know, wander room, but I just wondered if you had any ideas of what to do.
I mean, I've been to the property a few times, I mean, that's some, some of those things are going to come as, as we get more familiar with the, with the property, but, you know, we also want to be able to have people come and have, be able to use the cabins for overnight, for camping, and be able to have a space for trails and things like that, too, so.
I was wondering even an, an area for tents, and I don't know if there's anything that's already there, but that might be a great.
That could be something.
Okay, other thoughts, but I'll go ahead and pass it on then. Mr. Smith?
Well, I, I've looked at the property, and I think it's a great asset to the city, and will give us another drawing card, especially if we look at ecotourism, being that it's close to the Wildlife Trail and the Burden Park, something that we could tie into. So I think it'd be outstanding drawing card, and these numbers that you gave us, you said it doesn't even include the possibility of in-kind donations and cooperative sponsorships that would be willing to come in and do some of this work, and volunteerism as well. In addition to the school of Apopka using the pool, is there a possibility that maybe Wakava and Okoye may be interested also in coming and using the pool?
Say, Commissioner, whoever, whoever wants to use it would give me a call, so.
Okay, all right, so, so that's some things that we can look at to also make it more attractive and also help to reduce the cost. Knowing that we're not looking to, to make money, but we can break even in this kind of endeavor would be great. And as I looked at the layout of the camp, there's a possibility that we could be renting a section of the camp. It's easily to be able to mark, mark it off, and also allowing public access, access at the same time, so I think that's great. And maybe making some other amenities such as paintball would be another drawing card for the property as well as, as a field. So a lot of potentials there, and I think it'd be a great investment, if I say it.
And I think the, you know, and the one thing, and, you know, and all options are on the table, and things will come, you know, and again, as we're part of the facility more, and we see the use, and we see how the community uses it, and we're more familiar with it, there'll be more ideas, paintball's a great idea. The, the one thing that I've been consistent about, and I mentioned to some of you is, and I know there's Camp Weewah people here, is as a taxpayer, this is my opinion, as a taxpayer-funded public recreational facility, running that as, as an overnight camp where the camp, where the facility's shut down to the public for two months, to me, I don't think that, that aspect, that's the one thing that I would personally take off the table. I mean, there's going to be opportunities to use the cabins, there's opportunities to have Camp Weewah Weeks, or Camp Weewah Weekends, or something, but as a eight or nine-week overnight camp, then that's taking away from the taxpayer's ability to use the, to use the facility. So that is, but other than that, other than that, that I would personally take off the table, all options are open.
Yeah, that's why I said, I think the way that it's laid out, that we could do some of those private rentals and still leave
Yes.
other parts of the camp open for, for public access. And, and I don't want to forget about, we want to talk to Lynx about some transportation.
Right, I do have that written down, so.
You know what, the number, the number one thing that was not, that's not at Camp Weewah was, was disc, disc frisbee. That was, that was the number one ask for the camp. And we had like 70, I thought it was the same person keep clicking, you know, I want, you know, disc frisbee, and, and so I had, I had Rob go back, Rob Hippler looked at it and said, he said, Rob, can you check all these emails, make sure they're different emails? He's, oh, yeah, they're all, they're all different emails, so disc golf was the number one.
And I tell you, another popular sport is, at one of the other camps that I attend is ski shooting, so has a lot of possibilities there.
Mr. Becker?
Cool, so let me just preface it, my remarks, and then, like I said on Monday, I'm going to go, I'm going to go hard at you, because, you know, quite honestly, on my timeline council, this will be the largest single purchase or expenditure that I've been a part of, so I don't take it lightly. I know that there's a lot of support in the community for this purchase, but I've also received emails and texts and so forth that people that are highly skeptical of it as well. So I'm doing my part to do my due diligence to make sure that this is well thought out, and the investment's going to pay for what you intended to do. So, but to open, me personally, I love the idea. I mean, me personally, if I didn't have anything else on the peripheral that I had to consider, it's a great idea, especially considering the alternative, right? The alternative being, you clear-cut that property, you put development on it, homes, and it just perpetuates growth issues that were already experienced in the city of Apopka. But, you know, in my role here, I've got to be very objective in my line of questioning, right? We talked about this on Monday. And I would think that it's incumbent upon staff to, to answer it and be, you know, totally transparent. So before I even get there, you know, into the financial aspect of it, I mean, we have to ask ourselves a few things, right? Is it a cultural fit for our community? Does it kind of meet the brand that Apopka is? And is there a need? And a need can be kind of separated and. And a need can be kind of separated into two. Is it a critical need or is it kind of a nice-to-have, a luxury quality of life, whatever you want to call it? And I think this concept of this idea meets all three of those. Obviously, on the needs section, it's more of a quality of life type issue than a critical foundational governmental need for the city of Apopka. So I can get there just on that, that surface. The financial part of it is what I want to key in on, right? So I'll ask you the operational side and then I'll wait for Edward to get up to talk about the, the other impacts on other departments. But if you, you know, in all honesty, and not to place blame on YMCA or anything like that, I just want to be quite frank about how this has all transpired, right? If you go to their website for Camp Weewah, it's basically saying we've stopped operations due to financial feasibility and the unknowns as a result of COVID. So right off the top, we've said, we better, as the city of Apopka, if we're gonna do things differently than the YMCA, we've gotta do it better in order for us to be and remain financially viable with this particular piece of property. And so that's where you come in. Your vision for this is, you're the mouthpiece of the Parks and Recs. You own this division, you own the success of Camp Weewah, if it's, if it's acquired. And so when, when we have something before us that's considered more of a non-essential purchase, which this is, it's not a critical need by any stretch of the imagination, I would think that the litmus test for us to spend money on it is a little bit higher. So I just want to go through what you, and I'll try and hop onto questions that are applicable to you and I'll hold the other ones for Edward. But if I read it right and if, if we stay on the same talk track that we have for the two months that we've known about this, it's around $5 million, give or take, based off of the appraisals that we've seen. Let's just say, for the sake of arguments, $5 million acquisition, acquisition fee. We pay $5 million for the park. Based off of what you've given us on the pro forma, uh, the total cash flow, you, you had cited the $2 million on the capital side, but really the total negative cash flow over that five-year horizon is $3 million bucks, right? So total cost of ownership for the five-year period would be really negative 8 million. Let's just assume that we get the million bucks for the grant. That's basically $7 million out of our coffers, however you want to slice and dice how we pay for it. But really, $7 million that the city puts forward to pay for Camp Weewah and for its operation over a five-year period. So that's at the crux of the matter is, and I'm gonna press Edward a little bit when we, when we talk later, is, you know, how are we paying for that? How are we paying for that $3 million? I get how we're kind of cobbling things together for the purchase, but how are we paying for that $3 million? You know, the operational loss that we'll, we'll stand to have over the next five-year period. Commissioner Banks had touched on a little bit, marketing and advertising, I find that very interesting. Um, and again, I think when you have an asset like Camp Weewah, it's gotta be very focused, marketing and advertising bit, especially with the diversity of programming that we have on this paper. Uh, because if we have day camps, if we have ropes courses, I mean, there's a lot of stuff to it that I think is worthy of its own allocation in terms of expense.
And I think there's multiple factors in that. And, and part of it is we're, we're marketing to our own community. You know, like we said, ropes course, pool, day camp, and then there's marketing to regionally and nationally as far as retreats and, and things of that nature.
Yeah, and, and to me, this is a very regional, regional conversation. If you go and Google, you know, municipalities with their own camps, I mean, it'd be hard pressed to find municipalities that have their own camps anywhere in this particular region. So it immediately becomes a regional draw. And how you market, advertise that, I think it's worthy of investment to advertise an asset. It's similar, kind of what the mayor's doing with the Saturday Sound thing with the amphitheater. It's to build muscle memory so that people do association with assets that we have in the city.
Well, and, and I will say, speak to this is, I know that a lot of Orange County schools have sent their fifth graders to Camp Weewah. So there's a natural feeder that, that's gone on for years. And that's something that we can recreate with Orange County on that, is, is to bring those schools back in there and then it's, it's bringing more awareness to the facility.
And then on the P and L, you know, again, to touch on what Commissioner Banks was saying, why would we not have a fundraising slash capital campaign slash benefactor of something? You know, we've been talking about this for a couple, for a month and a half or whatever the case might be. You know, what, what have you asked our large benefactors in our community, our large corporate, uh, you know, companies that are in the Apopka area? What has that conversation been like and what has the response been thus far?
Well, I'm, I'm taking charge of that one. So I, I, I want to get, at some point, Rich is gonna come up, former councillor, and kind of been spearheading the, the, the friends of, of Camp Weewah. So at some point, we can bring him up, we can talk about those, and he's got some ideas and we, we've been talking about it. I guess it's that, you know, the cart and the, and the horse is where do we, you know, where do we, when do we start that? And I mean, I think we've got to at least have more than just a discussion in front of city council. I mean, as, as soon as, if, if we as a city council agree to, to purchase it, then I think that's when I, I get into high gear. I, I'll tell you this, it was interesting talking to Greg Fox, his reporter, talking about insurance. And he says, oh, what's going on with Camp Weewah? So I told him, he says, oh man, you gotta talk out, gotta reach out to my, my, my friend at Lowe's. He says, so I called the, he's a district manager over, I won't say 20 stores. And it's kind of, he's, so I called him and he laid it out and he goes, oh my gosh, he said, we would love to help. He says, I've got, I can get you a couple hundred employees there. I can, I can give you a lot of the supplies you'll need to, to, to do the renovations you need to get it up, up and, up in a hurry. So he said, so just let me know when, when you, when we can talk. So I, I, I mean, it wasn't, I wasn't even pressuring him, it was just like, yeah, get, you know, Lowe's wants to be involved. So I, you know, and then I talked to Martin Pichinini, you know, who's a, Liz and Errol is a big, does commercials. And he goes, oh my gosh, he said, I could see Lowe's making that a national campaign, you know, getting different groups out there. I mean, we've, I've talked to my Rotary Club, I've talked to other groups that, hey, what I'd like to do is give you a building. This is your building, you know, here's what we need this building to look like when you get done. We need a new, a new toilet that's ADA compliant, we need, uh, we need it painted, we need a ramp up there that makes it ADA compliant. I, we can, I think we can do all that, I just, I don't want to spend a lot of that effort until we've got to the point where we're making, you know, we're making, we at least make the commitment. Then, then it's obviously it's the wise, you know, to accept our offer, whatever that might be. But, so, you know, I'm more than willing to take, you know, take lead on, on those corporate sponsors. And, and I think there's a, there's a, you know, to me, you'd reach out to REI, you'd reach out to, you know, to Home Depot, Lowe's, you'd reach out to, um, like Bass Pro Outlet and say, hey, do you want to be a $50,000 a year sponsor? I mean, I think all those things are possible, I just, I think it's too early for me to go out and, and start campaigning for those, those dollars.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be, why don't we have that on the pro forma though? I mean, because to me, if absent it being on your revenue stream, you have zero confidence that it's gonna come in.
Why, I don't like to make promises I can't keep. I mean, that's, that's.
That's me, that's not him. That's, that's for me to, I mean, and everybody, but.
Right, but I'm saying that that's a legitimate kind of revenue stream that we would need to have in order for this to be successful.
I can't, I, I understand that, but I can't say what, I can't even take a guess as to what that would be. Is that gonna be REI, we'll use REI as an example. Is that gonna be, they're gonna give us $250,000 to rebuild our ropes course? Or, or is it gonna be, we'll give you $5,000 a year? I mean, I'm really.
Right, and again, I won't belabor the point. I mean, these are the types of things where if we're thinking about buying this and we're thinking about seeking corporate partnerships, have a corporate breakdown, $250,000 gets you a building, $100,000 gets you a parking lot named. I, I don't know, but for not to have anything from fundraising and corporate sponsorships on here, I mean, it, it says something. From a expense standpoint, um, does the general maintenance contemplate that volunteer? Or do you, do you just?
I'm sorry?
Does the general maintenance contemplate like volunteer hours? Or do you just assume that it's gonna be all city staff?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, so that's worst case.
Yeah, I didn't count for volunteers.
Okay, um, in terms of, and this may be an Edward conversation, but the liability and coverage, obviously the city doesn't have a city pool now, ropes course, climbing wall, a, a lakefront for boats and stuff like that. How would that impact our liability insurance?
So Commissioner, what, what we would do is, of course, we would have to add, just like anything else when we bring on any new equipment or whatever, we would add that to our insurance policy. Um, so we would work with, currently we have the Florida League of Cities, as you know, that works with us. And so we would be getting quotes from them to add these things to our policy. I do not, we do not know what that number is. I do feel because we already have a, a, a general policy, that it will be, that we can actually be more efficient, probably, a little bit maybe than the wise men with those costs. But you're correct, those costs would be part of this, the maintenance costs that are in this number would include the increase that we would have to have for that insurance.
Okay, um, and then, uh, just a point of fact, um, you know, based off of the pro forma that we have here and what, what it's gonna cost us, and basically your commentary around, you know, from a steady run state after 2026, you, you are forecasting a $340 favorability, but beyond that, it's $100,000, give or take. So in theory, I mean, and just to be open and honest, it's just a point of fact, this will never pay for itself, right? If we pay, if we're buying this, it's never gonna pay for itself.
You, you mean, you're saying, so the, the $3 million, you're saying we're not gonna make back the $3 million? Is that, is that, I mean, I'm trying to understand.
So the total investment of seven, $7 million, we, if you just take this by itself in a vacuum, based off of what we're going to get profitability-wise on this camp in terms of normal course of operation post 2026, we're never gonna get profitable enough for this to ever be paid back just based off of the offering that we're offering in camp.
I wouldn't, listen, this is what I'm gonna say, is, could we, over the next 20 years, bring in $7 million? Yeah, we could. I'm not gonna stand here and say that that's gonna happen, though. So, I mean, I.
Commissioner, can I, can I add something there? Um, and I will tell you, from my experience, and if you look around, and I did some, some research on leisure services in other cities and county, um, and if you, if you go through those numbers, you will find out that recreation is never a break-even, a complete break-even. There are certain sections within the Recreation Department that will, the revenues will cover the portion of the services that are related to that particular project, item, sport, whatever. But currently today, if you take our budget and look at it, our budget, our recreation program doesn't come anywhere near break-even for the facilities that we provide. Have we recovered the dollars? And I look at this like, I did this kind of in my, my head a little bit. Northwest Recreation Complex was several million dollars. Have we recovered that investment over the years? Probably not, but it is one of those items that we have to, to provide leisure. One of the things that we do is to provide leisure services, recreational leisure services. And I think it's important that staff, and we do, work as hard as we can to cover as many costs so that we don't have as much of a tax burden. But at the end of the day, there's a portion of your tax dollar, everybody's tax dollar that goes to recreation. And I've yet to see a, um, one where it's completely break-even, it's, it's very tough. Um, but, but I, but you're right, I think, I, you know, so could you say that we would recover that $7 million? I don't think anybody here today could say, yeah, we could recover that $7 million. But I think what it is, it's one of those things where we're adding an asset that is making our leisure services a better place, giving more opportunity, also kind of, it kind of, this is kind of a, you know, kind of sets Apopka apart in that, you know, hey, it's kind of, it's a nature park and it has a camp and things like that, we have more to offer. Um, so I think what you're doing is you're providing that, some more leisure, um, facilities, activities or whatever that in the, at the end of the day helps our whole community from.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to show me on the visual, like, I, I get it. I get what the value is of its being there, don't get me wrong. I just, you know, on it, and I get that, you don't have to remind me that the loss theater in our city is Parks and Recs. I mean, it's a huge loss for the, the city, but adding more to it just makes us even more out of bounds, knowing that we have other areas of spend that are critical for our city. But the, and again, I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate. Just need for the, the public to realize the financial decision-making that has to go into this thing. The, lost my train of thought.
You're playing devil's advocate.
So, what? How do you, so you, you touched on it a little bit before, how do you balance the resident open use? Because I know people have struggled to conceptualize that. So, you know, you get this a lot, right? I'm a taxpayer, I'm spending money to create, to buy this, this Parks and Rec space, and yet I might be limited in my use. So what's your kind of answer to that?
Well, I think, you know, as a day camp, as a day camp, when you're looking at eight to five or 8:30 to 4:30, Monday to Friday, it, it's okay to kind of, that's not gonna be prime time as far as public use goes anyway. So if we had, if we could, for those nine weeks or so during the summer, we keep that as a, as a confined day camp so that it's safe for the kids and the parents that sign their kids up for camp. This is, and I haven't had this conversation, but this is what's in my head. So I'm just sharing it with everybody at, at the same time. Um, we can keep that as confined space for that eight to five or, or so, Monday to Friday when camp is in session. Parents feel good about sending their kids to camp, knowing the public's not coming in. But, you know, sunset's late in the summer, after five o'clock, if somebody wants to come and go on the lake or somebody wants to come and use the property, play basketball, whatever, um, great, fine. Um, on weekends, obviously open to the public, opportunities during the year for people to stay in the cabins. Um, then, not necess, but they wouldn't have necessarily exclusive use of the entire facility where we want to be able to have as much taxpayer access to the facility as possible. Um, while I'm saying this now, I'm not saying this as a declarative policy, policy statement today that, these are things that are in my head, that I've thought about. I want to have acc, I personally want to have access for the taxpayers to be able to use the facility as much as possible, understanding that there's gonna be, there will be times where we want to close it off so that only children and the staff are there for the safe, for the safety of the children and for the comfort of the parents. So with that in mind and not making a policy statement, that's, that's kind of the vision.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody has the expectation that you have every single I dotted or P dotted. But like I said Monday, I mean, my expectation is you're asking for a lot of money to buy an asset or your department. I would expect a little bit more, you know, congealed kind of vision for what you're trying to do. So let me give you an opportunity. My last question to you would be, what is your elevator pitch? What's your value proposition to people?
Well, I think, well, here's the, all right, I didn't know, you know, go ahead.
So there's, there's people watching, there's people that ask me, that will ask me. So when you are positioning it, what is the value proposition for the taxpayers of Apopka to purchase Camp Weewah?
Great, so it's a, you know, first of all, we're gonna provide another park that has, that has unique opportunities. When you're looking at the lake, you have boating opportunities, fishing opportunities on there. Um, a passive park with trails, ropes course, climbing wall, the dining hall that's used for rent. You know, we, we have the pool that exists, plus we want to add another pool. Um, opportunity to provide a camp where we can double or more our capacity because we are capacity limited with the camps that we provide between Fran Carlton Center and Billy Dean and that, that's gonna expand tremendously. Um, so opportunity to bring in, you know, more economic impact from people from outside of Apopka and put Apopka more on the map for, um, corporate retreats. You know, when we have the dining hall and the cabins and the other facilities around there and to sell that. So this is, this is kind of the overall, the overall picture. So a park, a retreat center, a camp.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Ross, kids?
All right, so I kind of heard all the discussion. And so the one thing that is a big concern, and I'm going to kind of echo what Commissioner Becker was saying, is, is not so much, it's a big investment for the city of Apopka, but a lot of our residents, the taxpayers, not, you know, I understand it's a, you know, we, we have a big support from alumnis from the Camp Weewah, but our taxpayers, they don't have the information that we're all discussing up here, the possibilities of fundraisers. We don't have a number for how much more the city's gonna be paying insurance. Um, they don't have a definitive of what our plan is. And if you go on the website, the only thing they have is, you know, what's in the front of the agenda that we're looking to spend Camp Weewah, what's on social media, Camp Save, uh, Camp Weewah. That, all of that is just kind of, you know, what we may be doing, what we are doing, we are raising some money. So kind of, we need to put it all together and present it to our taxpayers so that they have some level of comfort that we are making this big purchase and they are gonna benefit from it. What we're selling is everything that we can do, uh, to get revenue. And we, and granted, no recreation park breaks even. Um, it's always going to be kind of what I had said to you, it's a little money pit. It, we're always just trying to maintain it. But I just want to be able to present to our taxpayers something that's definitive. This is what it's costing us, this is what it's going, um, how we're going to operate it, and this is what our expectations are. Right now, it's just us that is, are, are getting all these numbers. I, I don't know where it's at in our website for them to just see it for themselves and be able to have more access to what we have up here. Um, we seem to be kind of saying, yes, 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 and I am for Camp Weewah. I think it's a great asset. Um, you know, I'm gonna, I'm sure the commissioners feel the same way. I don't want to give it to a developer, I don't want more homes. I, I definitely want the park, but I want the taxpayers to kind of be on board with us. And so the elevator speech for you is, how do we sell it to our taxpayers? Not to the alumnis, because the alumnis want it and we want it, but what's really important is how we're going to spend this money. Because for the last. Because for the last, since the last budget, we've been telling them we're trimming down, we can't deal with the infrastructure, no lights. We've kind of said a lot of things that we can't do for our own community, and yet we're now presenting them with, let's buy this park.
Well, I can't speak to that stuff, I didn't, I haven't heard the same things you've heard about not paying for things. I think that, from my perspective as a department head, and this is, you know, Mayor Edward K. answers. I haven't heard that we, that we haven't been able to pay for infrastructure. I think from what I've seen, we've done well with that.
Yeah.
And I kind of, I can't really expand on what I just said to Commissioner Becker about, you know, the vision of the future, the long-term future, and what I've said to each of you, that the long-term future of, of this facility and the, and the benefits that it prevent, presents to, to the council. I mean, we can, I suggest us, we could, we've, it's been on Facebook, and I know the, I know we had the. So, I mean, I.
Everything that's been on social media has, you know, I would say nine out of 10 has been very positive. But it's been on social media, there's nothing coming from us officially. This is our plan, this is our mission, this is how we're going to operate, and this is how we're moving forward. And so I just, how can we get that message so that the city website has it, so that the taxpayers have access to?
Brian, why don't you go over kind of like, we were talking about, you know, because we were, we were about in the five-year work plan to work on, you know, the Harmon Road property. So kind of go walk through that and, and what that would have cost. And so we, we look at the differentials between those two projects.
Right, and as a, as a two million dollar project, that's where the capitals come from, that we've put in the five-year plan, that we went to planning in October to move that over. And that was for pavilions and tennis courts and, and fields and playgrounds. And that was basically around the corner on Harmon Road, that we went through with Public Services, and we went through with Shikkenia, and we went through with Community Development, so.
On, on top of the 1.5 million.
Right.
Value of the property. So we're now at three and a half million versus whatever we want to, you know, look at for Camp Weewah. So we're, from just a capital point of view, I mean, this is pretty simple. Do we want another, you know, you know, smaller northwest complex? Which is great, I mean, we could, we could use more fields, you know, for baseball and soft soccer and, and football. Or do we, we want something unique? And, and that's kind of the, you know.
And, and I'll add, and I'll say this much is, is for the, the seven million dollars. Like if we, we can't, you can't create the, the seven million dollars that, yeah, we, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we're ever going to make the seven million dollars back. Like I said, we could, but we might not. For the seven million dollars, and we wouldn't make it on Harmon Road. Like if we, for what we would put at Harmon Road, I mean, it's a, we'd build the park, but it would be a park. I mean, we might get a field rental here, pavilion rental there, but we wouldn't make the money back on Harmon Road either. We cannot, and I mentioned this when we had the workshop, you can't build this park for seven million dollars. Like if we had 40 acres somewhere and we wanted to build what Camp Weewah has with, with the lake access and, and the mature trees and, and the buildings that are already there, we can't build it for seven million dollars. It's not, it wouldn't be possible.
So what you're saying is the, the park that you were going to build at Harmon, you had a capital for two million dollars already allocated for it.
Right, so that.
So you're going to use that two million?
That was, that was a five-year work plan, not, not.
Oh, it was a five-year.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That was over five, that was over five year, that's a five-year.
Go through what he determined, and then we'll talk about, you know, with his help, what we were able to do with one of the appraisals that you have in front of you. So Richard?
Thank you, Richard Earp, City Engineer, and it has been a very busy week. So I'll go through the numbers, love numbers being the engineer. So I was asked to look at the two appraisals. So the first thing I did was I saw that both appraisals said that there were 69.65 acres of property on these, on these three parcels, and, and I verified that was correct. And then I got to get into the details some more, and I found that the little tiny triangular 1.1 acre piece of property, that one of the appraisers had considered that all undevelopable, and one had considered it developable. So that was my first discrepancy that I discovered. Then I started seeing graphically a lot more land that was not usable when I compared the graphic to the tabular data on the property appraiser's website. So on the property appraiser's website, what they do is they break down, they'll say the total parcel of land is this, and then they'll give you the specific acreage for the submerged land, and then the specific acreage for the wetland land. And they will categorize those different in the tabular form. So I looked at the tabular data, and then again, I looked back at the graphic, which is part of the property appraiser's website. They specifically delineate the area, they don't delineate wetlands, I wish they did, but they do delineate the lakeshore. So we began to cross-reference the tabular data with the, the graphical representation, and on the, on the, the middle-sized parcel, the numbers lined up. But, you know, we, we, on the property appraiser's website, I used a very, I, I used the tool that they provide, and I could, I could graph it out, and I could figure out the area of the, the submerged area, and that lined up, and that made sense. Then I began to look at the graphical depiction of the area that was submerged, with the tabular data that was submerged, and I, I wasn't, I wasn't coming up with anywhere near the same number, it was about six acres off. So I had gotten, I got with our, our GIS folks, Mr. Suverin out at Public Services, and I had him go and, and pull the graphical data from the property appraiser's website. And with the software the city has, he could, he could very carefully go through and calculate how much, how much land is being shown as being submerged on the property appraiser's website. We realized there's just a flat discrepancy between the two on the property appraiser's website. And that amounted to 5.9 acres difference between the graphic and the tabular data. So that was the first thing that, that, that I identified as being an issue. The second thing I identified as being an issue was that outside of the, the area that's shown as submerged, there is 15.81 acres of, I'm sorry, there's 16.86 acres of floodplain area. That's a, that's area within the 100-year floodplain where it has a 1% chance of flooding in any given year. And with my experience with, with development here, knowing that it, no one has developed all of the floodplain area on their property, and knowing our land development code. Our land development code says that if you put one cupful of dirt in the floodplain, then you have to take a cupful of dirt out of the floodplain somewhere else. And the engineers can do a little bit of wiggling with that, like they can, they can lower the area near the lake to put in their, their stormwater ponds, and then they can have retaining walls and put the homes up above the area of the floodplain, but still take up some of the floodplain area. So I said, as a rule of thumb, being a very conservative, I would say, at most, they could use 80% of the floodplain area to develop, which I think is, is, is more than I've seen other people do. But I had, I wanted to come up with a number. So that left, that left 3.37 acres of land that, for floodplain reasons, I don't believe it is developable, and that's an opinion. So I brought the, the discrepancy between the graphics and the tabular data and the floodplain issue, and actually throughout the week, or throughout this week, although it's been a short week, I've coordinated with both of the appraisers a couple of different occasions to make sure that I understood what they were thinking when they put their appraisals, appraisals together. So I, I summarized this information to them, and I sent it to them, and I asked them to please consider this. So the Integra Company, I, I spoke with them, and I explained how the graphical data and the tabular data didn't line up, and I talked with them about the land development code and the, the cup for cup compensating storage, and they agreed my, my logic was, was reasonable. And they actually resubmitted their appraisal earlier today, about, well, two hours ago when this meeting started. And it went from five million down to 4.2 million.
How much?
It was originally five million dollars. And because.
You have it, you have it in your pocket, you should have it on your desk there, Commissioner. It's got a blue, blue half, kind of a triangle.
It's got a blue triangle, oh, here it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So their, their, their appraisal started at five million dollars, and then earlier today, when they, when they incorporated the, the information I provided, they lowered it to 4.2. And then an hour and a half before the meeting started, I spoke with the second appraiser, and, and I explained the same things to them, and we talked through all the numbers. And they said, well, Richard, they said, the, the problem is that the tabular data that both appraisers used from the property appraiser, they both used it. It's, it's defensible, it's, it's a number that's on the property appraiser's website. This work that you're doing with the graphics is, is a little bit subjective, and, and certainly your floodplain work is a little bit subjective. And they said they, they, they were, they were apprehensive to change their appraisal, their number, and they were the six million dollar one, they were the higher one. They were apprehensive to change their number unless we had definitive data that we could point to that, that showed exactly where the boundaries of the lakes were, and where the, where the boundaries of the wetland were, and exactly what the acreages were that, so we could compare apples to apples and give both appraisers the same information that they could work their appraisal on. And the second group, the Clayton, Roper, and Marshall, recommended that we get a survey, a professional surveyor, go out and survey the boundary of the lakes and the boundary of the wetlands, and, and then come back with a, with a, with a professional surveyor signed and sealed drawing that both appraisers can work from, and they would, they would consider revising their appraisals based on that more detailed data.
Okay, any questions for Richard?
Well, that, that really hits on one of the questions I'd asked earlier. What is the actual, what are the actual buildable acres? So with that readjustment at 4.2, I know the taxable amount is 3.8 million. That's of course usually lower than the market value. But that's getting more realistic to what I was thinking and why I asked, what are we, what are they asking for it, you know? To me, the, the negative is, is partially dealt with or answered, you know, the, the same questions. Why should we invest in this? Why would she, should we invest the money? Is the fact that we have a, a gained asset in that. Worst-case scenario, as long as we have accurate numbers of what the value of that is, we haven't lost seven million dollars. You know, I, I would say we would approach it in a two-tiered manner. First of all, the acquisition of it, then, which gives, as you're saying, I don't want to get the cart before the horse, that gives us the opportunity to look for the rest of the three million to improve the property. If we don't have that support, we can always devoid ourselves of that asset. And again, not that any of us want to see just more houses, nothing against the, the building industry, but we really have a valuable asset, so we're not losing on that aspect. However, we've got something that has the potential to make us a leader in the ecotourism market. This is something that Apopka has unique that a lot of others don't have. And that's what you always look for to market something, what do you have that others don't? It's also one of the reasons why other businesses haven't come with higher income jobs, because what do we have to offer their employees if they move here? So I think there's a lot of positives on this, but I absolutely, you know, agree that we need to be asking these tough questions, you know. Brian, if you have a through, a few grill marks on you there, it's because we're, we're doing the job that we're supposed to do as well, so. But I do think there's just a real, real benefit when it comes to, you know, overcoming some of those negatives by, trying to get my notes to work here, by the value of the property itself. So we haven't lost that, and we can always turn around at that point and say, you know what? Those that are licking their chops to want to build more housing, if we can't make it viable, then we, we don't play with the public's money. At the same time, I sure would hate to lose this asset. I think as you termed, it's like our, our own Central Park, and green space is really valuable. Finding that balance, it really answers a lot of what the public is asking for, so.
And, and the appraisal values, there's two ways you look at it. One is income, which this is not, we know it's not going to be an income generator, or the other is what's the highest and best use, which is, that's how we got to the 4.2 or starting at the 5 million and the 6 million. It's not, has nothing to do with camp, they're going to mow all those buildings down if it turns. And so the value of the, of the property is based on highest and best, which is single-family homes, not as a camp. So that, you know, when you look at the, at the appraisals, that's what they're going to base the, the values on. But any other questions for Richard?
Yes, as I was driving around the property along Benio Road, there's, I think, one, two, three driveways that goes into the property along Benio Road. So does that mean that that area of the land along Benio Road i- is developable?
Well, I'm only, I was only aware of two driveways, the one further south of the main entrance to Camp Weewah, and it almost looks like someone constructed a little cul-de-sac in there.
Yes, okay.
To make it look like you could put a few houses in there. But the issue is that all of that, or again, about, actually in this case, there's a little bit towards the end of the cul-de-sac that's not within the floodplain, but I would say probably 75% of that land is well within the FEMA floodplain. So, you know, if you're going to put dirt in, you got to take dirt out, and there's just, again, the developers could, a developer could probably come in and squeeze a lake between, you know, what might be big enough for a lot and, and, and Mud Lake there, and, and get maybe a house or two at best, but it, it, it would be a challenge to do that. And, and the, and the other driveway is the one from like, we, the actual camp itself, I wasn't aware of a third one.
Okay, I, I was just wondering what was the idea behind those being there?
That's, that piece they bought later, it was a 10-acre piece that, that the camp bought later from the developer. I think they found out they were in the 100-year floodplain and just walked away from it. So Camp Weewah ended up, or the YMCA ended up mine. Commissioner Becker, good?
Okay, thank, thank you, Richard, thanks for all your help on that. I, I, you know, when we found out Friday that, you know, that we're looking at the, at the usable acres, I'm, as far as the, the highest and best use, I, I had a, you know, some concerns that were really where we were at. So Edward, I guess it's, it's up to you to bring us home, and then we'll have a couple. I know we got.
Yeah, so I've been, I've been taking notes so that I can answer some of your questions and, and concerns. I don't know if Nicole, is there anything, are we, anybody have any questions for Nicole on the grant side, or are you good there? And, okay. All right, so I guess let me say this first, I have several things I want to go over here that I've jotted down for my, and then I had my original notes. But I, I think Commissioner Banksen, you hit right on it, this is an asset. So it's, and, and kind of the way we're looking at it, where we've talked about, we've sold, just, you know, you approved a sale of, of an asset currently, so that asset comes off the books. This is like trading one asset for another asset, it's land. In this case, it's got buildings on it, you know, and park. So I wanted to say that, that's kind of, you know, how, when you, when you look at it from an investment standpoint. The other thing that I think we need to keep in mind is that we were going to do Harmon Road, it was in our plan. So if we sell the Harmon Road property, that park goes away, but this park would take its place. As you know, the comp plan requires that you have to have so much leisure space, recreation space as we build. I got with Jim, had him do some numbers, we're pretty close to that right now where we are. We're pretty, we're pretty good when it comes to leisure space. But as, as building comes in the future, keep in mind, you're going to have to, we're going to have to take on more of this. That's why the Harmon Road was in our project. This will help that as well, just so keep that in mind, that eventually you'll have to do more leisure. have to do more leisure, um, down the road as part of the requirement of our comp plan as we build, as, as, um, building takes place. So the other thing I wanted to talk about was, um, Commissioner Becker touched on this a little bit too. I guess let me go back first and say this. So if you, if you remember back when we had the Duke agreement, we had some things in there, we were talking about settling up some of our debt, paying off some of our debt. Um, there were some things in there that, that, you know, we had some dollars for some things that we were trying to do that we weren't able to do on our budget, that we had as part of our budget. Um, part of that was for these kinds of things. So that as you grow, as we come into the next budget year in 2022, if we freed up some of those dollars, we can afford to take on some, some additional expenses in, in certain areas. Your parks budget, as you know, all budgets grow every year. Public safety grows, all the budgets grow and, um, at budget time, their needs, they bring their needs, their wants, and we go all of those and we, you know, again, touch all parts of the budget. You know, granted, we know that public safety is our number one. That's why, that's why we're here. Um, but at the end of the day, um, part of our budget and part of our services for our taxpayer is also leisure services. That's part of it as well. So I think it's critical to remit, to keep, keep that balance in mind too, as we move forward. Um, as far as parks breaking even, I talked about it a little bit earlier. They do not. Northwest Recreation does not break even. Um, you know, there are other tax sources that are used, sales tax, property tax, pieces, parts and pieces of those taxes are used to help fund leisure as well. So keep that in mind as you go through, um, and, and, and look at all the expenses, operating expenses going forward. Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, grant opportunities. Keep this in mind, and Michael had mentioned this earlier when we were talking about this, there are a lot of grant opportunities once you own the property. Um, and Michael has worked with some of those in his prior, um, his prior job and he, he really feels confident that we're going to be able to get some grant opportunities to help with the capital. So that two million dollar capital number that you're talking about between sponsorships and maybe applying for those grants, um, will be able to help with that number too. So there's, I think there's a lot of potential and there's a lot of, um, things that we can do to help with the cost going forward. And this is no different than any of our other budgets. You know, in public safety, we're always looking for grants. The chiefs are both, they've been looking every day for grants for other things that we can help, that, that'll help us with our budget as well. So this is along those, this, this is very similar to that as well. So, um, the, the, the other, I guess, kind of what I really wanted to talk about is from a budget standpoint, Commissioner Becker, you hit on this and we talked about it on Monday, we do have all, we have needs in all of our departments. And I want to say, and I'm proud to say this today, and you should be very proud of yourselves as well, that if you look back just three or four years ago, we have, we have taken some dollars in this last couple of years. We have really moved a lot of dollars into infrastructure improvements. And, and you should, it's visible, you can see it around the city. We've repaired those roofs. City Hall roof has gotten the approval. You should see the, any day now, you're going to see the, the old roof come off and the new roof go on. So you've seen those improvements. We've had four or five roofs that we had to do. We've got those done and, or will have those done. You talk about resurfacing, you know, you guys made a, a very, um, good decision, a well-informed decision when you put additional funding over into the streets fund to allow some additional funding for, um, streets, um, the resurfacing and stuff, because that fund is struggling. So we have put some more dollars into infrastructure. We've put a lot of dollars into infrastructure in the last couple of years and I think that's, you need to be commended and, and keep that in mind and you're seeing those things as they come about. One of those items that, and I, and I'm telling you, and that, this one I'm passionate about, because I, I do this every night, is the lighting. So we've, we've been very proactive in getting the lights on that, that haven't been on, you know, um, so we've, we've done a good job at that. Park Avenue, we've been talking about putting lights on Park Avenue for a long time. You know, we've had hard budgets, tight budgets, but we were able to free up some dollars to your, you know, um, your hard work. We've been able to free up some dollars and now we have, um, a lot of, Park Avenue is lit a lot better than it's been in a long time. We put lighting in other places. Michael Gladon, we've added new LED lighting. We have, um, and, and we have some, Pam and her group and Paul and his group continue to look for those places that are dark, that we can light up to help, um, to help light up our streets. We've put in, and you're going to see that presentation, it's coming to you as well. So you can see how many actual new lights we've put up and how much, what we've done. So I think when it comes to infrastructure, I don't want you to think that we haven't been investing dollars in there. If you look at the last two or three budgets, we have really put a lot of money into, into those items. Are we playing catch-up a little bit? Yes. So I think, you know, it, it takes time. We can't, you know, we, we, it took us a little while here to get to the roofs, but we're, we've got those accomplished. So I think you're seeing that and you're seeing improvements to that piece. So I don't want you to think that, that we're not doing those items and that this is putting, you know, would put a strain on those items. That being said, when we get to budget time, you see, as you see here, there are operating costs that would need to be included in the budget. This is no different than any other park or any other department that we'll have to fund in our budget. Keep in mind, you've got that Duke Energy money. So if there's, you know, if, if, if we decide that, hey, we want to earmark a little piece of that, Edward, for those initial improvements that we've got to do, so that we can do that, you know, while we apply for grants or whatever, you've got some funding there to help with that. But at the end of the day, it's, you need to know that, yeah, there will be a little bit of impact on the budget, the new budget going forward from an operating standpoint. We've set ourselves up good, I think, from an operating standpoint, where we will be able to take that on. Again, I can't predict what, what the future will hold for revenues, but I think we've set ourselves up good for that. I think looking at paying off debt that we've talked about, looking at doing some capital things that, that we've needed to do for a while, getting those maybe done and caught up with the money that we do have from Duke Energy will help when we get to budget time to be able to address those items. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. I, I don't want to, and I don't want to sit up here and tell you, promise you that we'll recover that seven million dollars. What you're doing, what I think you have to, the way you have to look at it is, we're trading one asset for another asset, that it stays as part of the city, that provides leisure for our citizens, that's unique in providing a park that a lot of places don't have in our area. So I think that's how you have to look at it. Um, is it a big purchase? Yeah, it's a big purchase and I agree with you. But I think we have the staff and I think with partnerships and I think working hard within the community, um, if, if we did have this asset, I think you'll see that the community will get behind it and you'll have a big, big support with big, be people coming forward to help.
So that, questions for-
I can answer any questions that you have.
Take a sip of water, because I saw you licking your lips over there. Yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of narrow my commentary to the point that you just kind of touched on and Commissioner Banksen did too. So if I look at the, as, as a reality versus risk, the risk's out of the fence. We're mitigating risk because, because there is value to the land, totally get that. And if you look at it, it's going to do nothing but appreciate, right? It's not going to depreciate. Um, uh, so I get that. And then if you think about it, depending on what we actually put it in terms of the offer, if we make that offer, knowing what, what I've seen or read in terms of what a developer may or may not have, uh, offered for that land, when you kind of do all the math there, um, on the lower end of the appraisal that just came in, it almost balances to the T of what that land value could be in terms of market offer to pay for some of the full five-year costs that we put into it. So from a risk side of the fence, okay, I think we're, we're good there. I can, I can defend that because, um, but the reality is, if we go through with this purchase, I doubt that we're going to be selling it anytime soon, um, for that reason. So my, my point being is, when we do have, the reality of the nature is, the two million that we just described about the Harmon Road, that's a CIP item. We all know that's paper money. That's not, you know, that's not like it's real dollars that we're taking from there and putting it over here. So, you know, there's a lot of things on the CIP plan that we don't, we don't fund and it just, or it gets pushed out. So I don't want to use that. So the, what I'm getting at is, if we've got three million dollars worth of operational and capital costs over the next five years for this thing, how do we ensure that we're doing the critical need items as a city? Whether it be flooding issues at Border Lake, I know that we've got appropriations, but that's not guaranteed, but it has to be done. Uh, there's dollars there, there's, um, the public safety complex. Now granted, that might be bond issue or loan, whatever the case might be, but there's ancillary costs that are associated with something like that. There's additional officers and firefighters that are going to have to staff Station Six, um, that, or even expand our police force to do with the growth that we're seeing exponentially here in Apopka. Um, the infrastructure stuff, we've already talked at nauseam, but how do I have assurances that, because this is all one pool. The general fund is one pool. It funds parks and recs, it funds police, fire, accounting, all of these other departments, they all fight for the same dollar. So every, seven million dollars that were taken through the sale of property or were taken from cash, cash flow loss for this property is seven million dollars that other departments couldn't have leveraged similarly. So how, I need assurance that we're not being punitive to other departments and their critical needs. And is there a confidence factor that I can hear from you? And we've got several directors in the room. You've heard from your employees, I've heard from some of your employees and they have voiced their, their concerns about critical needs. In this room today, do I have confidence that we're able to meet critical needs of each department at the same time making this investment?
Well, and what I will say to that, Commissioner, is that is, that is the job of the council. That's what your job is when it comes to budget time. You're correct. You have a general fund and that general fund has to fund all of those service levels. And so you get to control how those service levels are funded based on the budgets that come forward, um, and printed, that are presented to you. I will tell you, we have some of the best, if not the best, fire and police services around. So that tells me we've done a good job at funding those and continuing to fund those. At budget time, you're correct, it's, it's a give and take, because it's all comes out of one, one pot. And so that will be the challenge, that as, as it has been every year, to look at how we'll distribute those dollars, how will we effectively place those dollars? I think that's one of the reasons why with the Duke Energy, you've seen some ideas that have helped to free up in that budget. So if we do a new public safety complex, we're going to have to have a bond issue. We're going to have to have some, some dollars for that in the future. Freeing up some dollars for, for some of the issues that we've got, um, in operating in certain departments or whatever, you're going to have issues like that. Capital items that are in the departments, you know, one of them is the fire truck that, you know, we talked about using some of that Duke money as a deposit down to help get, to get, replace that fire truck. Um, so I think, I think that's a decision that you're going to have to do at budget time. Recreation will be one of those at budget time too. You'll see that budget. You'll have to determine how much of that, you know, that you want to, you want to fund in, when it comes to leisure as well. So I think it's kind of a balancing act. That's one of the things you have to decide, is this a park you want to add that will add to your operating? But when it comes budget time, you've seen some of the preliminary numbers and, and staff works hard, you know, grant opportunities. I can promise you, we're going to be working for every grant opportunity for this, if this, if we purchase this land, to get whatever we can, because there's a lot of opportunity for, for these kinds of, this kind of, these kinds of parks, whatever. So you're right, Commissioner. This is, looking forward, we'll put, you know, um, decisions at budget time, you'll have, you know, some additional personnel to fund and-
But absent, absent just kind of putting this back on council to say, you resolved it at budget time, my, my, my very pointed question is, knowing that we'll have on some years, a million dollars worth of operational loss because of this, this, the introduction of this park, and I wouldn't say operational loss, but total cash flow loss. Are we, are we putting at risk critical needs in other departments of our city to, to pay for this? Do we, are we presenting risk?
You know, as I stand for you today, I would say no, because I, we, our police and fire is not at risk. I think they are funded very well. I think they have the things that they need. I know Station Six is in the works. We've tried to get some funding appropriation from the state. Uh, we've worked really hard, um, you know, if that doesn't, we don't get that, you know, that we got to go through, we have everything in place to do that. Um, I think, you know, we've, we've looked at our infrastructure needs, we've looked at the needs, we've looked at all of our needs, and I think we've done a really good job at covering those items. You've seen them at budget time, you'll see them again this time, the needs of the departments. Um, you know, and some of them carry over, because we've got a few things that we've had in prior years that we've been able to move up and complete this year. So, well, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, and, and I'm, and I'm not saying, when I say it's a decision that you'll have to make, staff will bring their budgets, we'll bring their, the budgets, and they'll bring you the, the, for the vision and the plans that you want to see. You'll see those budget dollars and, and again, we'll, you'll have to, we'll have to set the budget and set the millage rate at that time. So you'll have all the data, you have all the information you need. When the departments come to you and bring you their, their needs and their information, it's the department director's duty to make sure that they have those pieces and parts and things that they need for you to make that, that, that best decision. So, but this will be another one of those. If we buy this, this asset, you're right, you will see in the budget, the people that we have to add, the costs, you know, insurance will be able to show you those pieces or whatever. That'll be, so this will be another piece of that, of that budget that will, that will come on, um, as part of the overall plan. Will we sacrifice police and fire? I, I don't know. I, I, I shouldn't say I don't know. What I mean is, no, I don't, I do not think this council will do that. Would we recommend that? No, I wouldn't recommend that. At the end of the day, as everybody knows, public safety comes first. So we will look at those items from that standpoint and make sure that everything is funded, um, the way it should be. So-
Yeah, I mean, because I, you know, from where I stand, it's the risk of other departments, you know, doing, doing this. I mean, especially from a critical need standpoint. The, the secondary one is obviously the expectations of our residents on a typical service level kind of agreement standpoint, you know, the, the general beautification and upkeep, maintenance of our, our city assets. Um, and then the last question I had was, and we touched on it Monday a little bit, can you just talk about, um, and again, I'm just doing this for sake of full transparency, but talk a little bit about what, what the financials look like if we, if we've just stepped through what we just looked at versus played out? What if scenario in terms of if it was to go to a developer? What does that look like from a tax-based perspective? Uh, what they would be, uh, contributing in terms of services? Because there's, I think the residents are desiring to say, okay, I, I get what you're trying to do if you keep it as a camp. If for some reason it didn't go through, what does that look like financially if all of that turned into homes and it turned into tax base?
Well, I think we did that number, Jim has that number and he can give you that number of, of what it would generate as the law was, which is, it's, it's not a big number, but-
Based on the developable land, you're looking at about, um, forty acres of developable. Uh, you take about twenty percent off of that and you've got about space for about a hundred and fifty homes. The home values in that area are running around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At our current tax value, um, it's about seven hundred and ninety-five dollars per home, which equates to about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If you boost that up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because it is lakeside, whether or not you, again, you can get all that in there, um, the value goes, or the taxes, uh, go up to about, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then of course, as, as we had discussed, then you've got police and fire that are going to be responding to those hundred and fifty homes, give or take. So that's a, that's again, a burden on the city versus having a parkland where it's not quite as much of an impact.
Yeah, and thank you for that. I just want to make sure that that's abundantly clear, what the, the different options are here. Um, I think that's, I think that's the last question I have for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Banksen?
And what size was the proper Del Harman Road?
Twenty-three acres and eight point something, right at nine acres.
Yeah, twenty-three or so on the south side and about eight or so on the north side. The the south side's worth one point, well, it came out at appraised value of 1.862 and the north side is 60, 68,000 or six, no, 63,843, I think it is.
Which part were we talking about?
No, no, no.
Six hundred, six hundred.
Yeah, 600,000.
Six hundred, six hundred.
So so which part were we talking about for the possible park?
It was on the northern portion, the eight, the eight acres.
That eight acres, so we're talking about eight.
No, 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 the other twenty-three acres would be for the park.
Well, the Harmon Road Park was on the north side, north, north of Harmon Road.
Correct.
Yeah.
So twenty-three acres.
Correct.
So we're talking about twenty-three acres as opposed to six to seven acres if we do the camp we were. So I I look at it as a quality of life for our residents and the the residents are desperately asking for something on this side of town that's closer than northwest, what we have currently. And if I remember correctly, and we talked about the the money from Duke, is it not correct that we're going to be receiving some additional funding in the future years as a result of this new agreement with Duke?
Correct, Commissioner. That that projection was, yeah, they predicted predicted about additional million dollars based on their numbers that at budget time, we will talk about that. Correct.
Okay, so so that's some additional funding that we're not, we don't currently have that will be available. All right, so I'm good.
Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, again, going back to the the swap of land asset. To me, why I lean that way partially is because cash on hand, obviously you have to have some for operation, but it's a losing asset. It's losing 15% annually in its value versus land is appreciable. So again, the the protection for the taxpayer's investment is the land itself, and that that won't go away. And we can, although it's not likely, if we're going to all this trouble to try and get a hold of this, as you said, you know, for that to just go away, we're not going to do that lightly, but that's why I lean towards the more of a two-tiered approach to this. First of all, the acquisition of it, which then gives the time. Do we have the support? You know, Mayor, with your contacts, I know, you know, all over the nation, you can, no, seriously, though, I really think there is a lot of support that will come in and deal with the other side of that, the the three million that is going away if it if it doesn't sustain itself. So it gives us that time to know. Is that liable? If we're able to raise that funds, then that's not lost to the taxpayer, it's actually gained to this community. And then we see the long-term benefit, the green space versus urban sprawl. And we're going to need green space anyway. This is already partial infrastructure in place. We will have to do something to it, but any new, if we trade this and we simply sell it off and we have more homes, which people have said they really don't want to just see us more more homes, 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 though we can't stop certain growth, we can steer in the right direction. It will put us ahead in that area of green space, give a valuable asset that this community has longed for for a long time, for the swimming and different things we've already gone over. So really, that's my big thing, and I I think that's what you're saying, is the asset value of that, if we get it at the right price. So we have to be smart in our negotiations so that we're not hurt, that we're not out anything. And when we come out of that, my last thought is, is the YMCA possibly interested in, for their name's sake, to give us a better value of acquisition and they become one of those long-term sponsors in that? I don't know that that would fit for them because they don't have control.
I don't doubt it.
But I'm always looking at each.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Option, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. Again, I think there's a tremendous opportunity in this, and if we approach it right, we won't hurt ourselves because we'll have that asset value if we need to. We say it's not going to be feasible. You know, again, right to ask all these questions. Can this pay for itself? Are we setting ourselves up for a long-term loss? If we can separate those two, I I think we're really setting ourselves up for a real opportunity, and I think the community will benefit in the long run.
Mr. Blaskis?
All right, so at this point, what are we doing by saying yes to the acquisition? And how, where do we go from here?
I'd like to make an offer, if you're asking me. I'd like to make an offer based on this 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 appraisal.
Okay.
But that's.
Oh, so that's that's what.
That's what I'd like to see, but obviously, you know.
And so then the other part of the question is, if we move forward with the acquisition, where is the funding coming from initially, right now? Where is that funding going to come from?
So Commissioner, to that, to that question, what, as you know, we have reserves. We have reserves that sit at over a 25% reserve level. You have a land sale that you just approved for about 1.3 million. We have some future land that we've talked about, the Harmon Road land we talked about that would be part, you know, we do go through with this deal, that we would list that. So you would have some 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 1.8 roughly, that was, and then 600,000, depending on what what you do with that. So you have that funding. You have the Duke Energy money that's there. Keep in mind, you know, we talked about some things that we wanted to do with that, but that those dollars are sitting there. So and you have a grant that we're hoping that we will get to be able to help with this as well. So when you look at all of that, again, you also have, there's also the opportunity to borrow money, you know, if you, that's an option, too, if you feel like you need to borrow money. But but those are the dollars that we have that we can can use to purchase this item. Your reserve levels are sitting at a good point right now to where you could front the money till the land sale's on Harmon Road to put the money back into the fund. So there's all, so the the dollars are there if you decide to to do the purchase. So, you know.
Would we be able to borrow the money? I mean, we we have a really, what is it, a triple A credit rating?
Double A rating.
Double A.
So you could you could borrow the money. I would recommend not borrowing the money right now at this point in time. You've got some big things coming on the horizon that you're going to probably have to, you know, depending on, you know, what the wishes are of the council, a big bond issue that's coming that that we need to be thinking about, that's going to be pretty big. So we need to make sure that we set ourselves up for that that future debt. But I think between the land sale and hopefully we get the grant and the dollars that we have, you know, we've got some money from Duke, I think you, you know, there'll be enough funding through those those dollars to, you know, basically almost trade asset for asset. So the we will have to use our our cash to make the purchase, depending on the timing and everything, if they accept the offer, depending on the timing it takes to close. But.
Okay. So that I just want to ask the mayor one question.
Sure.
You have the 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 Friends of Camp Weewah who are saving.
He is here, ready to speak.
Who are fundraising a lot of money.
Well, I'll have.
For to save Camp Weewah, so where does that money come in?
If we've answered all the questions, I'd like to, you know, we've got obviously public comment. I know Rich is here. Won't you?
For the sake of that one, though, good point. So are today's business, are we just kind of directionally saying, yes, we would like to make an offer, or are and then funding methodology is is going to come later? How's that work?
Yeah. So I envision, I envision that if you if you give direction tonight for the mayor to make an offer, whatever that whatever that is, however you decide to do that, that we would make that that we would make the offer and then we would have to hear back from the Y on our offer if they're good with everything, and then we would have to put together a an agreement or a contract. And, you know, you would you would see that to to do the final, final close.
So tell me, why is it you would set it up where it's contingent on another council meeting, or would you call a special meeting to go over the particulars? How would that work?
You know, it all just depends on their closing, what they where they are on the closing, you know, do they need 30, do they want to close in 30 days? Do they give us 60 days? Will they give us 90 days? It'll all depend on.
Well, the two things we've got, we'll have to accomplish, even if they accept the offer, is we've got to get a survey, a legal legitimate survey, and we have to do a phase one audit, environmental audit. So those would come. So the the process in in my mind would be is we we make an offer, we send it to the Y, based on, you know, a survey, which, I mean, I think we're fine there, obviously title search, make sure that they they own the property, and then a environmental, you know, audit, and then we could close within, you know, we can pick a number of days. Michael, is that, are you asleep or are you still awake?
I'm awake, believe it or not.
Does that what, does that sound reasonable?
You can make a motion to basically authorize the the city to enter into negotiations for the purchase of the property. And that'll entitle drawing up an offer and then drawing up a contract and moving forward with the the purchase.
Okay.
I think once we, if we are authorized to enter into a contract, to negotiate and enter into a contract, we won't go back to the council for final approval of the contract. We've already authorized that negotiation. What'll come back will be, it's a, well, no, you've been authorized entering in execution at that point. Then, once we have a final, a final deal, it can come back to ratify the deal.
Okay.
But you can, but the motion should be to to authorize the city to enter into negotiations for the purchase of Camp Weewah.
At at a price, though, at the at the price?
Yeah, at the agreed upon price.
Okay, okay, all right.
But we are now authorized to negotiate that 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 price.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Michael.
All right.
All right, Rich, you ready to, we put you through enough?
And while he's coming, again, I do think it is a a point for negotiation for them to realize all the work and years they've put into it. We're trying to continue that versus it just be, you know, an investor.
I I understand, I mean, but from their point of view, if if you're hemorrhaging cash, I mean, so I understand, I mean, I.
In other words, a favorable in our in our favor.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying, but I, you know, I also got to look from the Y's point of view. I think we have a, we have a appraisal.
Right.
And I think we offer that appraisal. That's, I I might, you know, the last thing you'll do is kick somebody when they're down, and the Y is, obviously, they're hemorrhaging cash, and and I think I think that's a legitimate offer. I think I feel comfortable with that offer. Could we offer 4.1 or 3.9? Yeah, but but, you know, we we still want them as friends. We still want to, you know, partner with them.
Well, I wasn't trying to get you to say exact amounts there, just to hold the cards to the vest, but I'm just, I'm saying, I think it will be a salve to them to know that this can continue in something they put a lot of heart into. So anyway, we'll leave it there.
I don't think that's, I mean, at this point, they're not, they're they're just trying to 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 keep the doors open. And I don't, and I don't mean that in a, you know, that they're going to close if we don't, we don't purchase it, but I don't think that they've got a lot of wiggle room in, you know, the bank's, you know, breathing down their neck, so I don't know there there's a lot of wiggle room. So with that, Rich, I am so sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Come on.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I saw a couple of you guys out at the Save Camp Weewah block party, so I thank you guys for all doing that. I'm going to try to address some of the things that you guys have said while trying to also speak on behalf of the Friends of Weewah. So again, my name is Rich Chalhais, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. Since we spoke last, our Friends of Weewah group has gone from 250 members up to 750 members. We have spoken to the media in support of the city's purchase over and over on many occasions, and thanks to your organization and support, we did have that great block party where I think it was just about 200 people showed up. We sold T-shirts, you guys sold T-shirts, and we had a really great time. I got some good media coverage on that as well. I'm here today for a few reasons. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Weewah group. My first and foremost reason is to once again reiterate our group's support for the city's efforts to save Camp Weewah. We share in the thousands of Apopka's residents' opinion that the city doesn't need another gated community, and it certainly doesn't need one on that property. You see, for almost 100 years, those live oaks and rustic buildings have, as our campfire song says, guarded our golden memories. Many have said you can build, or many have said you can never build another Camp Weewah in this day and age, and they're right. The name Camp Weewah means something to hundreds of thousands of people in America and around the world. It is a place that has developed incredible leaders, as we know here politically, and but also in sports, music, business, and yes, even SportsCenter YouTube stars. In 2021, when we all know our kids are hurting from social distancing and lack of interaction more than ever, has Weewah ever been more important? Think of what it would mean to the citizens of Apopka to have a world-class summer camp facility, a place where kids and their citizens can learn to swim, how to shoot an arrow, how to overcome their fears, go on a hiking trail, visit green spaces, learn how to climb or overcome their fears and climb a rock wall and go down a zip line, to play basketball with their family, and most importantly, to log off and to be with friends and make friends and share those special moments that we all remember as kids. We hope the city keeps part of the resident camp alive, but we understand, as we think that is an invaluable experience to learn about themselves and grow into leaders, but we know you have a difficult duty in front of you, as you have to deal with all of your constituents and making sure that Camp Weewah is for your citizens. As a parent, I have seen how much this quarantine has cost our kids, and the city of Apopka has a chance to be bold, to be a leader and say, our kids need this. And you know what all of us do, because Weewah is not just a summer camp. It can host so many of those community events at a time when all of us will shortly soon be vaccinated and screaming for the opportunities that Camp Weewah can bring. Think about bringing of, you know, the family reunions and the, you know, just a camp cookout and, you know, having hot dogs and singing songs and just being together again. We all miss those experiences, and Camp Weewah is already set up to host those experiences. I thought I heard someone mention, back here, I think it was, mentioned the OCPS, and we used to host almost every summer or every elementary school, every fifth grade field trip would come out to Camp Weewah. And we didn't have the wildlife trail that you guys do now. I could just imagine the the opportunities that could come from an OCPS contract. Seminole County has one similar. I think Weewah could be better than theirs. So that can be additional resources and funds being brought into the city. One of the great things that has come about this last month is the chance for Weewah's directors and staff to come back together. Together, we have hundreds of years of camp experience, and we know how to partner with government. We know how to partner with other nonprofits. We know how to partner with businesses. We know how to raise money, and we know how to get grants. And I can tell you that we have all pledged to be available to you in any way, not just because we love Weewah, but because we know how valuable and the thousands of ways that land can be used to make Apopka a better place. We are not going to go away once the city buys the property. We want to be here for you to watch it grow and raise money and make it better. We want to lead you, or we want to lead you to people and companies who share the city's goals with Camp Weewah's alumni and sponsor updating older buildings, creating new facilities, and most importantly, helping sponsor the children of Apopka to take place in Weewah's life-changing experiences. I have been extremely impressed with what the team, the team that the city has has already assembled, and they're bold and exciting programming ideas. And we want to offer you assistance with these programs and help bring back existing groups and programs while helping to bring in new ones. We have thousands of alumni who are already ready to send their kids back to Camp Weewah, and you have seen just a small portion of our fundraising fundraising potential. We already have had 86 donors and about 50, about $15,000 raised, and I can tell you that once the uncertainty is gone, we are ready to give a lot more. But as you can probably expect, we're kind of, some people are just holding their horses a little bit. So but we want to help you with that. I think about that the camp has been around almost 100 years. I think about the Boy Scouts back in the 1920s, who were growing those, who.
... through about this flashpad. And we ask, is this going to be viable? Will this, and we, we had conservative numbers, and it's been a great hit, you know, and it's, we're so excited for this.
But it's money, I get that, but it doesn't make one, in this, in the next, this year's budget, we're even reducing the revenue. So Parks and Rec was never meant to make money. Police and Fire, never meant to make money. The only department we have in the city of Apopka that makes money is community development. So, I mean, forget about all that, is the dollars that we're giving from sales tax and from property tax and all these things, where do we want to invest them? And that's, that's simple, and, and we, I think Edward put it, you know, pretty, pretty boldly that, you know, our first responders are A number one. Without that, everything else is, goes away. But at the point you get that taken care of, and I think, I don't think anybody would argue that we're, we've got, got an AISO-1 rated fire department, we've increased the revenue at the fire department by over a million dollars, we've added, police officers are going to add hopefully another 10 this year. I said, so, public safety is being taken care of. I mean, I don't, I don't know how we can even say that that's not being taken care of. So, I, we're frustrated that, that we think that we're not going to move forward in, in a non-fiscally responsible way, because over the last, since I've been here and Edward and, and the team we've got in place today, we've reduced our overall indebtedness by $7 million. So, we know how to operate a budget, and, and Brian is, is as good as they get in our, in our Parks and Rec, all of our department heads. So, we can make this work. I mean, it's just whether you want to make it work or not. I mean, that's, it's, it's pretty simple. Thank, thank you, Rich.
I guess the point to be made is a dollar lost is a dollar lost. I mean, that's just a dollar that you can't put towards public safety if you lose a dollar elsewhere in the budget. That's the point that I make.
All right. Can, can we just take a five-minute break? I have to go to the bathroom.
Sure. Does anybody else want to speak on the issue?
Oh, you do?
Oh, let, let's do that. Oh, Rod, you coming down? No, you're going to the bathroom too. Okay. There you go. We have somebody else that wanted to speak?
Yeah, Rick Gonzalez.
Yeah, Rick Gonzalez?
Okay.
I'll wait.
I think I'm total supporter of this. It's fantastic. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the north shore of the lake, and I have a plat here from 1946, or actually 1949, showing that Camp Weewaw was the entire lake. So you are going to regret it if you don't buy the north shore also, and the owner is very willing to negotiate a price and hold a note. So I'm going to leave copies of this with you, and the one thing I haven't heard you talk about, I ran the Dragon Boat Festival in Tavares for a number of years for our Rotary Club, and our biggest problem was wind. And there is a competing Dragon Boat Festival in Citrus, we don't, we sunset it last year, but in Citrus County, where they have a protected lake, they get upwards of 56 teams from all over the state of Florida, from as far away as Canada, to come down and compete on that lake, because they have a very protected venue. If you own that entire lake, you could have a Dragon Boat Festival, boat across the lake, people get out and start again. It would be a fantastic Dragon Boat Festival venue. I want to leave this marketing which are with you and these plats from 1949. If you don't buy the north shore, you're going to regret it.
Thank you.
Okay, he's a good salesman. I think he was here the last time, too.
Five-minute break.
Thank you.
Where did, where's, where's Banksen? Where's Banksen? Where's Banksen at? Okay. All right, so we've got everybody, we're now at the point where, I guess we can open it up to any, any other comments, and then if not, look for, for a motion, do something here. So any, anybody want to lead us out?
I am willing to make that motion based upon the readjusted appraisal as a ceiling for that and give the staff the opportunity to negotiate on the city's behalf.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
So moved.
Got a second by Commissioner Smith?
Just one last comment before we take the vote. I mean, I, you know, I thank Edward for coming up to the lecture here and answering my questions and Brian and so forth, so, you know, I've got, you know, I had my concerns, I still have some concerns, but if we're saying that what we're taking here and the operational costs that we're incurring, we don't have immediate risk in terms of our budget and to be able to satisfy critical needs for our city, I can get behind it. And then to your point, Edward, it's incumbent upon us as a council to make sure that the priorities stay in line with what priorities need to be during the budget process.
Well, that's, I mean, we, we started out this year, or 2019, 2020, with, with about a $3 million shortfall based on sales tax, and we ended up in the black, I think, or close to being break even. So I, I think that we as a city are pretty well-run. I think we, the departments, you know, operate within their budgets, I think we, we know how to, to run the city, but, you know, what if you have COVID plus, plus, plus hit us? All bets are off on anything. So we can't, you know, we can't make, you know, promises, and that, I didn't expect Brian to make promises he can't keep. But I think, you know, when you look at, at what we've got, we've got, you know, obviously we reduced our, our indebtedness by $7 million, and if we, you know, we're looking at some of the Duke money, another, another million plus there. I'd say I got, I talked to a good friend of mine, Lou Hobner, who is the most successful Wild Turkey banquet, you know, guy on the planet, and he told me, he said, listen, he said, Nelson, you put this together along with the Camp Weewaw friends, he says, the minimum I'm going to, I'm going to raise for is a quarter of a million dollars. And, and if he tells me, I'm telling you, Lou Hobner, he doesn't, he doesn't do anything second-class. He, he knows how to, he knows how to raise money. So I think there, there, obviously, we want big corporate sponsors, we want, you know, small corporate sponsors, I think we've got, you know, the enthusiasm of the, in the Friends of, you know, Camp Weewaw, we go back to, you know, from the Friday when we, we first posted on the city website to the Monday when we had to have those numbers to the, you know, the DEP, 152,000, you know, people had liked, or had looked at the, at the, at the post, you know, 5,000 people liked it and, and 1,000 shares, you know, that was in three days, and this is off the city website, which obviously we've got a decent following, but it's not, you know, it's not a great following, and so, you know, the enthusiasm is there for sure, and, and I, I want to go back a little bit in time for me, and, and that, I, I tell you, you know, we, we go back, when I was a county commissioner, we, we had a pot of money, $4 million, that each of the county commissioners were, got to spend, and you know where I spent it? I spent it on Magnolia Park, because it's, it's, you know, it's the gateway to, you know, the Wildlife Drive, and so, the improvements we're going to make at Magnolia Park are going to obviously bleed over into what, what we can do with Camp Weewaw. And so, you know, we'll have a, a dock there that, you know, will hold, we can have, you know, bass tournaments, all kinds of things we can do on Lake Apopka, and now we add Camp Weewaw along with the Birding Park, which we all, you know, approved not too, too long ago. So I think this whole ecotourism component, along with, you know, what, what opportunities we have with Camp Weewaw, it just, it's something, you know, obviously, we'd love to have been able to plan for it better, I mean, that's, it's always the case, but, you know, we built the reserves up to, to greater than the 25% that, that Commissioner Banksen asked for, so the reserves are as healthy as they've ever been, the debt load is the lowest it's ever been, or, or in the last, you know, other than, than, than the water plant, which I wasn't a part of. But anyway, so we, we, we've made those financial hard choices along the way to get us where we are today, and, and I don't mean by scrimping on, you know, our, our first responders, but, you know, we, we challenged each of our directors, you know, you know, tell me why we need that, and, and challenged everything from, you know, the IT to Parks and Rec to community development, and so we, we have really worked hard to get us in a position where we can take an opportunity like this and make an offer. So I, I applaud a couple of people, I got to tell you, it's, Nicole Kennedy has just been super, she's done a lot to help get us to this point. Also, the Friends of, you know, Camp Weewaw have done a lot, golly, just the amount of enthusiasm those, the folks, and to, to watch them sing around, you know, sing the campfire song as we ended the, the day a couple Saturdays ago was pretty cool. So the city has really come together from all the departments, working on, on this, this opportunity that we've got in front of us, and, and we, we feel confident that, you know, we'll get some money from the DEP slash, you know, federal government, and then obviously additional grants that, that are, are available to us. So with that, we got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So, let me just, let me just ask you, what's the offer that we're?
4.2 million.
4.2 million.
Yes. Okay, next up, we've got, let's see here, ordinance number 2816.
Ordinance number 2816. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use amendment of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from mixed-use to commercial for certain real property located east of Okowi Apopka Road and south of State Route 414, comprising 2.93 acres more or less, and owned by McCloskey Holdings LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planted Two with the city's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment for mixed-use to commercial for approximately 2.93 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located east of Okowi Apopka Road and south of State Route 414, with the crossing at Emerson Park Townhomes to the east, or what used to be called the Emerson North Townhomes to the east, and the Adventist Health Hospital to the west. The property is zoned mixed-use east shore gateway, and a application for CC community commercial zoning has been submitted and will be presented at the next agenda, next agenda item. The subject property is approximately 2.93 acres with commercially zoned or commercially-oriented properties in the vicinity. In addition, the applicant has submitted a concept plan with this proposed small-scale future land use amendment and rezoning. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval for the proposed small-scale future land use amendment to commercial, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2816 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 17, 2021. This concludes my presentation. I do believe the applicant is present and has a presentation as well, and as always, the applicant and I are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for Phil? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion from the council?
Still moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen for ordinance number 2816?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lassie. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, ordinance number 2817.
Ordinance 2817. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from M U E S B T, mixed-use east shore gateway district, to C C, community commercial district, for certain real property located east of Okowi Apopka Road and south of State Route 414, comprising 2.93 acres more or less, and owned by McCloskey Holdings LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from mixed-use east shore gateway district to C C, community commercial district, for the same subject property as the previous agenda item. The proposed community commercial zoning is compatible with the previously proposed commercial future land use, and the concept plan from last time has been submitted by the applicant. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to C C, community commercial district, and in the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2817 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 17, 2021. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2817 at first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, 2818 ordinance.
Okay, ordinance number 2818. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from high-density residential 15 HDR-15 to high-density residential 25 HDR-25 for certain real property generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Keene Road and Okowi Apopka Road, and owned by Francis X. Hydrick Jr. and Kathy Campbell Tolbert, comprising 21.59 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Bobby?
Thank you. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager.
For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Subject property is located at 2302 Okoye Apopka Road and is approximately 21.59 acres in size. Of the 21.59 acres, 6.74 are approximately at acreage as in Medicine Lake. The applicant is requesting a future land use amendment from HDR 15, which permits a maximum density of 15 units per acre, to HDR 25, which permits a minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre and a maximum density of 25 dwelling units per acre in order to develop a 350-unit apartment complex on the subject property. The property is located within the east shore New Market area, which is one of the four permitted locations depicted in Policy 3.1H of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, where the HDR 25 designation could be assigned. This is one of the four, there are three others within the city. A request to assign a future land use designation of HDR 25 is compatible with the designations assigned to the surrounding properties and is permitted in the comprehensive plan as the property is located within the east shore New Market area, which is one of the four locations depicted in Policy 3.1H of the future land use element. Concept plan was submitted as a point of discussion by the applicant, which shows the potential layout of the apartment complex. Orange County Public Schools has provided a report that indicates capacity for the proposed development is not available at the elementary school level and is deficient by 30.660 seats at the elementary school level. The property is zoned for Wheatley Elementary. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The staff recommends approval. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby?
Is the applicant planning on speaking? I don't know.
The applicant and his representative is.
So the deficiency on the seats, too, would be if we didn't have the increase in density, the capacity issue would not be an issue.
Correct. If there was no increase, there would be, it would be a wash. But they might come back at the zoning stage because there is gonna be property zone transition. So OCPS looks at capacity at zoning stages as well. So there could be a capacity determination.
Yeah, because I mean, in preparation with the applicant speaking, you know, what's the compelling reason to go up and increase in density? Because if I'm looking at it, that's 149 additional units. If you factor in three people per household, which our census data now has for Apopka, that's 447 residents. If you use the Department of Transportation, cars per household, that's 1.88. That's 280 vehicles, 43 additional students based off OCPS student generation rate, leading to that overcapacity situation. So I guess outside of, you know, some of these things that we hear from developers, that it needs this density to be economically feasible or financially feasible, what's the, what's the compelling factor here?
That's probably best for the applicant to answer that question. Commissioner?
Good, good late afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Wilson. May I remove?
Sure.
My name is Rebecca Wilson, 215 North Yola Drive with the Lounes Law Firm. With, with respect specifically to school issues, this is the OCPS, their, their analysis. And in fact, right now, Wheatley Elementary School is only at 74% capacity and they allow up to 110% capacity. So sitting here today, there isn't a problem. What happened is that the school board is keeping count of every unit that you all approve, whether it gets built or not. So right now, based on those counts, that reserved capacity is at 106%. So I'm gonna disagree a little bit with Bobby and that is anything built here, whether it's at 15 or 25, if you're looking at reserved capacity, is overcapacity. But when we come back through with the PD, some of this reserved capacity in the elementary will likely have dropped off because not everything that's approved is built out to that maximum. Second is, and we've worked a lot with the capacity enhancement agreements, even though capacity enhancement agreements have gone away, remember that was the additional mitigation payment you'd pay on top of the, of the impact fees. Well, the school board's done two things. One, they've increased the school impact fee rate. So unfortunately, my client's not gonna be able to pull a building permit fast enough to beat that rate increase. So they're gonna be paying, I believe, $6,700 per unit. And the school board has generally agreed with the development community. You let us increase these impact fees and we're gonna put that money to work to solve these capacity problems. The second is, we still have to meet school concurrency, which, which gives the school the opportunity to look at the adjacent zones. And in many instances, you'll find that the elementary schools in one area may be at capacity or overcapacity, but they can look at those other schools to find capacity. And if we don't meet concurrency, again, the school board gets us and we have to pay a mitigation fee upfront. It eventually becomes impact fee creditable, but the idea is the school board gets the money quicker and can put that to use to generally try to bring schools onboard around the time that we would start delivering units. So with the respect, with respect to the increase, as you know, your, your comprehensive plan has adopted certain areas in town where you found that it was appropriate to go between the 15 and 25 units per acre. This is one of those areas. And so we're, we're asking that that be implemented. It's adjacent to the 429 and really an area that, that we thought the city would want to concentrate some of its, its development. Happy to answer any other questions you all may have. We agree with, with staff.
Yeah, fair enough. And I was one that didn't vote for that particular piece of our land development change.
Then I may be looking for my votes.
So yeah, I was just curious as to what the, the driving factor for the, the density increase was. I mean, is it purely just economics?
Well, we, we are looking at partnering with a professional, high-end developer and, and to have the type of amenities that we want to include, yes, we need some additional densities. We'll be happy when we come back with the plan development and the, the master plan and the major development plan. You all will begin to see those, those types of amenities that we're, we're trying to support in building in this location. In addition, we're, we're reserving right-of-way for what we believe will be a future condemnation for a road widening that's coming through here. And, and again, that 25 units is, is the max. I think, as Bobby shared, we're coming in a little bit below that. The, the total would have been 371. And, and that is, you know, in fairness, what you're transmitting now. Our PD that we've submitted is closer to 354. So, so right in between the 15 and the 25 units an acre.
You indicated that Wheatley was at 70% capacity at this time. Is that based on because of the pandemic? Is that why?
No, the, these numbers, the school board used the numbers from November. I'm looking at it right now. It says November 5, 20, wait. No, that's when we submitted, sorry. They were using, last we talked, they are still using the October 2019 numbers for capacity because the school board does not want to assume that people that are being homeschooled aren't gonna come, aren't gonna come back. So the, the school board has not given us the, the benefit of using the lower, lower numbers.
So you're saying it's only at 70%?
I'm not saying it.
Well, I mean, but when, when I read the, the report, it said that the seats were not available. And when we're talking about 30 students, we're talking about a whole nother classroom. And I guess my concern is that school is already at a low performing. We're talking about a double D. And now we're talking about adding additional students to a school that's primarily supposed to overcrowd. Now, I understand the, the paying in, but, but those dollars really do not generate additional classrooms in a timely fashion. So I'm not so sure that that's a good process, but you know, that's.
Yeah, so let, let me address those two things. So it, it is correct that what the school board says is, if you consider all of the capacity that we've reserved for all the comp plan amendments that have occurred in this area, it would be overcapacity. If you look at what the capacity is when they did their last check in October of 2019, it is the 74%. And you've got to also remember, and, and look, schools are, they, they can be incredibly frustrating to deal with because the state also doesn't let you build a new school until the capacity is at, I believe, if somebody's smarter than me, is at 115 or 120%. So you can't, they, they can't even say, we know Apopka's growing and we know we're gonna have all these students. They still have to, in order to get funding from the state, they still have to go over certain capacity thresholds before they can build new schools. And again, our timing is, we're not picking up building permits for probably a year. So, so we will, they are on notice, this is coming up. It'd be about a year before we pick up permits and probably 18 to 24 months before we start delivering units. And, and in that time, you know, we'd like to do two things and that is continue to work with the school board to monitor these numbers and see if in fact the reserved, the reserved capacity is dropping off because just like us, you know, we're reserving capacity for 371 dwelling units. When we actually come in with our site plan with 354 units, some of those start to drop off. So we're, we're monitoring that with the school board because it's important to us to be able to, to go into the market and get the rents we want. It's important to us to have a good elementary school, too.
Any other questions? Good.
That just really covered my concerns as well. And I, I guess the, the biggest issue is, are you being held to the number of units based upon the school saying, okay, we are now able to? Is there any limitation that stops you from building as many units? Or are you going by building based upon the school system saying, okay, we can now handle that many students? Or does this just fall on the, the kids and the parents to scramble and deal with?
Well, let me say this two ways. First, the school system knows when you all adopt to, to transmit that you have approved these units. They do not put a hold on it and say, you can't have a building permit because you, you as a local government can make that decision. What they do have in place is school concurrency. So we do have to meet school concurrency and up, push funds upfront so that they have those funds in order to provide these, these student stations on time. And again, when we come back with the PD and the, the adoption of this, right? This is just transmittal tonight. You guys are gonna get to look at this again. We're hoping that these numbers actually improve because we believe that some of this reserved capacity that aren't really homes or students out there is gonna drop off.
And so we still have opportunity to tap the brakes if that is not the case.
Well, I hate to tell you that, but yes, you do.
If not, you might not win today. Okay, okay.
That's, that's pretty, pretty much touched on that. It's just, hi, I remember you from P and Z in Orange County. So funny that she sees me here. No, basically that was it, the increase in the units. And then of course, the burden on the local school and it's Phillips Wheatley. It's, I know it's not an A or B school at this point, but from what you're saying with the timeframe, by the time you start to get the permits and build on it, you know, the elementary school's only from K to five. A lot of those students have moved forward. And so a lot of that does become, the, the capacity for the school does become available. That I do know.
Happy to address anything else.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we'll bring it back and look for a motion. There'd be a motion to approve ordinance 2818 at first reading and then we authorize transmittal to Florida Department of the.
Yeah, and just one last comment. I mean, the, the, if we didn't do anything in terms of the density change, the capacity's already, it's already there. We wouldn't be talking about a capacity issue. That's already planned for. Yeah, I mean, the point that I'm making is just by paper density that we're increasing this by, I mean, 447 residences would almost be a 1% population and growth in our population size just off of this one density change. And we just had a presentation a couple of months ago on the road strains that we have in that particular area. So especially north of the intersection of Okoye, Apopka and Keene Road, that's a very dangerous intersection. Add 280 cars to it if you take the law of averages here, just based off of this density increase. I just, you know, what's the compelling reason why we're doing it? So. That's my opinion.
I mean, I know we do have one more crack at it when it comes back from DEO, but. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Mayor, if I can just address the last comment. I think, I mean, just driving here, I certainly drove past this site and the thing that's most compelling in this area is that there's a large, brand-new hospital. And if you, if you wanna start cutting down on transportation problems, you put the people where they're closer to where they work. And that's what's compelling to us about this site is that, that is the type of clientele that we wanna have, people that are, that are working or want to be adjacent to the type of development that's gonna go on around the hospital.
And Pam, what will that generate? I mean, I know without transportation impact fees because I mean, that's obviously, Apopka-Kowee is a road that, you know, meets, needs a lot of.
I just did the math on that. This project would generate about $650,000 in transportation impact fees. And through that whole corridor of that map that I showed you all a couple of months ago, we're looking at about $20 million in transportation impact fees. And really, the only way we're ever gonna get Okoye-Apopka Road is to get that impact fee money and spend it right there in the corridor. I understand what you're saying, but if we don't do anything, if we don't approve development, and this is just a general statement, traffic's gonna come anyway. And all of our, the capacity that we would like for projects in the city is gonna be used up from other jurisdictions where they put traffic on the road and it travels down Okoye-Apopka Road. And it's still gonna be bad. The difference is gonna be, we're not gonna have any impact fee money to fix anything. And I'm hoping if this project comes in, that they'll put the signal in at Keene. They'll fix that intersection. So to me, that's a compelling reason.
Is that contractually documented? Is that contractually documented?
We're in discussions. There's gonna be a Publix across the road. They just confirmed to me, they've been having conversations with them. And, and that's our approach. We're asking people to do things. This is a great opportunity to come into this city and do good things. And, and that's how they're gonna pay us back is by helping us.
Yeah, two final comments and I'll, I'll be quiet. So one, this is new as a funding mechanism to increase density for road expansion. It's new to me. But then also, two, Alta East, who are under the 15 dwelling units per acre, are building right by the hospital. So it's the same proximity and yet one developer can do it at 15 dwelling units per acre and this one needs 25. And so that's just, that's my struggle. It's my personal struggle and that's just my opinion.
All right.
Well, that was compelling to me.
I make a motion. You make a motion to approve ordinance number 2818 at first reading and authorize transmittal to Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Got a motion? Okay, fails for lack of a second. So then I guess the motion would be to deny. I'll make a motion, deny it. We got two choices.
Oh, yeah, I would make a motion to deny.
Mayor, could we ask to table?
What's that?
Could we ask to table?
Sure. Like to table it? Okay. Got a motion to, to table this item to a future meeting to be determined. Still moved? Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're looking for a motion to, for a continuance on ordinance number 2819. I guess we gotta go ahead and read it, though, first. Susan?
Ordinance number 2819. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida,
In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of Apopka Plan, comprehensive plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation in County Laurel to City Low Down City Residence. For certain real property located north of Boy Scout Road and east of South Vineyard. Comprised of 9.487 acres, more or less, and owned by Apopka Centerline Development Palace. Providing for severability in front of that date.
Okay. Bobby?
We're requesting a continuance to a date certain of April 7th, 2021, to preserve advertising. The applicant is still working on issues with Orange County Public Schools related to capacity determinations.
Okay. Do we have anybody from the public which should speak on this item? Not, look for a motion to continue this item until April 7th, 2021. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2828. 2823.
Ordinance number 2823. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, here and after described land situated in the North County, Florida. Owned by Lee Lee Kuhn, Lee Yu J.A., Nam King Yon, and Lee Jong Dan Nam. Located north of Kelly Park Road and east of Domon Drive. Providing for directions to the City of Park Stepper, Deli, Conflicts and Interactions.
Thank you. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Request is annex two parcels totaling 30.19 acres into the city. Is located on the north side of Kelly Park Road and east of Domon Drive, adjacent to the west of the Kelly Park Oaks at Kelly Park subdivision. The purpose for the annexation is it's, the applicant intends to develop Phase III of the Oaks at Kelly Park subdivision on the property. The parcels are contiguous to the state limits and eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida Statute 171. Assignment of the city future land use designation and zoning designation will occur at a later date. Development Review Committee recommends approval and the city staff recommends approval. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
The only question I would have is, is there any intention, because this will be the Phase III of the currently developed, development, that's redundant, but there's no intention of connecting it to that, I don't know what street that is to the left of it.
Domon Drive.
Yeah.
I believe the applicant has been in discussions with possibly connecting Domon Drive. I think there is a strip, a platted strip, that would possibly, or platted right-of-way, if my memory serves me correct, that would have to be possibly vacated or an easement or something. I'd have to go back and check the plat, but we've had discussions about that.
And residents in that area are aware of them, or would be aware of that? Been aware?
They've been notified of the purpose.
Jeff, you want to come? Any other questions for Bobby before Jeff comes forward?
Afternoon. Jeff Summit, Summit Engineering, representing the applicant. So it's actually a county road. So Domon Drive is a county road, it's not a city road. And the strip Bobby's talking about, it's actually a right-of-way strip that was dedicated on the plat. We've talked to the county, we don't have an answer as to whether or not they will allow a connection. The way we have the plan set up, we can work it either way.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2823 at first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, City Council reports. Commissioner Velazquez.
Well, I just kind of want to touch that I went on the first vegan festival that we had over in, at the amphitheater, and it was really a success. I was really surprised with the community, the vegan community that came out. And I actually spoke to each and every vendor, and they are excited about coming back. So whoever put it together, it was very successful and they were very happy. And a lot of the vendors sold out before the end of the, the end of the day, because I think it was till 7 o'clock. So it was, it was a good, a festival. And unfortunately, a lot of our own residents were unaware of it. And so whoever kind of hosted it, I would just recommend to kind of do a little better marketing for it.
Commissioner Bankson?
Yeah, just want to bring up, and I'm sure everybody's aware, we've, we've had our issues with flooding. I know Jeff's been working really hard on that. And I appreciated the correspondence, Jeff, that you, you took some real time to try and dig in and, and put on an understandable level why we're in this situation. Getting a lot of response, again, about our Lake Cortez area. And I don't know if you've been going back and forth on that. I think I copied you in on something there. But, you know, again, the study that we've just had done, it's now putting us in the place to start making recommendations, what we can do. One of the things that the study found was that the infrastructure is not collapsed nor corrupt, it's functioning the way that it is supposed to at one area.
Two different, you're two different.
Right.
You're mixing.
Right.
Okay, you knew that.
Yeah, at, at the one area.
Okay.
But as far as this one, where, how is this one, when, with, you know, with what they, they've come up with, with the studies?
Well, that one there is a real challenge. The one you sent me most recently with Border Lake, Lake Cortez, it's a challenge because it's really four different agencies, that Border Lake, part of it is in the City of Apopka, part of it is in Seminole County. Lake Cortez is in incorporated Orange County. That, one of the aggravating factors that's there is that somebody sat there in Wyden 436, and that would be the Florida Department of Transportation. And we've been trying to work to bring, the mayor's spent a lot of time trying to bring partners together to work on this. We're making some headway with Orange County. We'd like to pull FDOT and, and Seminole County into it, that really, that the, the two big things that have changed are some of the developments in Seminole County and then 436 that are exacerbating this situation. So we're continuing to work on it. But there, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, I just haven't figured out if it's a train or not yet.
So I was going to ask, what, you know, what can we share with our constituents to help them to understand this is our circumstance? And I don't want it to be one of those where, well, it's them, and, you know, finger pointing and nothing gets done, but we're also limited what we can do. And if we just throw money at a problem to make people feel better, but it doesn't fix it, that's not the long-term answer.
The fundamental problem is, we can't pump the lake. We can't pump Border Lake to the point to start alleviating some of the issues. Even if we were to pump it, we haven't got any place to put the water.
Right.
That, we're working with Orange County Public Works right now, that they've established that there was a previous drain well in the area that we're trying, that, working together, we're trying to work with them to, and work with DEP to try and reestablish that drain well, which will help alleviate the problem, the problem. We don't know where that's going to go with the state. Orange County does have the lead on it, and we, we continue to work with them. So that, that would be the light that I'm seeing. I'm just not sure when and where we'll get there. I will tell you that FDOT has not been willing to come to the table, is the best way to put it, that, that, that a lot of the issues that are being experienced around Lake Cortez are similar to those that, the other project you, you mentioned was Lake Hammer. And that, that we're seeing around Lake Hammer, that the residents that are having the flooding problems are within the floodplain of Lake Cortez. That Lake Cortez flows towards Lake Hammer, and if Lake Hammer's full, there's no place for the water to go, so it just continues to expand. So those are the challenges that FDOT is, well, those homes are in the floodplain by the, by the homes. That's not the solution we're looking for, that's not the solution Orange County's looking for, and that's certainly not the solution the homeowners are looking for. So they, they've not, they've not been active participants at this point, although we, we continue to, to try and pull them in. And similarly, we want to pull Seminole County in because a good portion of the lake is theirs, and we would like for them to, to help as well.
So the bottom line is, we're putting definite muscle and effort on the ability that we have. Should we then try and focus the email army that's out there towards some of these others? Will that help? Will it hurt?
Well, and, and I don't know, because I think that's what's happening now, is that they're being told to focus their efforts on Apopka because that portion of Border Lake is in Apopka. But again...
And Lake Cortez is not in Apopka.
Right. Lake Cortez is in, in Orange County. So, you know, they're, they're focusing it towards us. I don't know that it does any, that there's any benefit saying, "Hey, you need to get hold of Seminole County, you need to get hold of FDOT." I don't know that that'll make any way. Like I said, that we've, we've seen some progress in the last several months working with Orange County. We've committed to, if we can get the drain well reestablished, to helping fund that. That we're right now kind of waiting to see what happens with that. If, we think that if we've got a project in hand, it may be easier to get certainly Seminole County involved and possibly even FDOT.
Well, again, for them, it's like, well, go ask your mother, go ask your father, and nothing's getting done. So is there something that staff could do, that you could do maybe to give us some type of an explanation that we can help people to know, this is what we're running into, this is what we're trying to do, and we'll, we'll do the best we can?
I can put together a white paper for you.
Yeah, that would be great. And, and again, it's not a matter of, there's the concern about some of these other things we've been looking at, well, we're, we need funding, funding for this. This isn't a money issue right now. It's a stone wall that we're running into.
In most cases, that most of these folks know that, it's just that they're tired of being told, well, hey, you know, they, they want somebody to do something, and we'd like to, but, you know, the, the drain well's the best solution. Don't know if that's going to work or not, but whether or not we'll be allowed to do it, but that's the best solution, I think. So that's kind of where we're at. As far as Lake Hammer, got another email from one of the ladies out there again, that's kind of almost diminishing returns on replying because that they want to argue with our findings. And so we're still, we're going to wait for the final report to come in, and then we're going to, we're going to move forward with the projects that we think are appropriate.
Well, again, I appreciate the work that you're doing, and anything that you can give us to help explain what we're facing there will, will be a big help there.
We get all these emails.
Let me, let me, on, just to kind of, kind of follow up on, on what Jeff just told you, is that if, if we, if Orange County is able to convince DEP that there was a drainage well there, and that we, you cannot build any more drainage wells, so drainage wells can no longer, you can't build a new drainage well, which, for people out there that don't know what a drainage well is, basically, and I'm not a real big fan of them, but this is one of those occasions where it's probably needed. Basically, it's a straw between surface water and your aquifer. So you're taking whatever's on the surface and sending it right to the, so, so I've just, that's what, that's what we're talking about, a solution. So we've got, we've got a bill on the Senate side to try to get up to a million dollars to help us with what we do, kind of a two-part, first, we got to get the drainage well that DEP accepts that there was a drainage well that's now under 436, that it was really there. If, if, if they agree that that was there and that we can replace it, then what we want to do, and, and Orange County's not as, as, as excited about as I am, I think we've got to have some water quality improvements before it goes into the drainage well. Now, under a, under a, you know, a Hurricane Irma situation, all bets are off. Then you've just got, you've got to take the water off the pond. But if we can, for the, the normal times where you just got a normal half-inch rain and, and the, and the lake isn't at, you know, at historic levels, if we can do some kind of filtration before it goes into the drainage well, it, because we're so close to, when you think about, with, by the, by the crow flies, you're probably less than a mile from We Gavas Springs right there. So we want to try to, if we can, is to put some sort of filtration on it, but under adverse situations, you've just got to open it up. The other well that, that we, we're also, we're going to look at rehabilitating is one on Lake Page.
Lake Page and Lake Pleasant.
And, and Lake Pleasant. So we, we've got the ability, and neither are cheap, none of them are cheap, but those, those will take care of that, that area, and it might even help at some point with Lake Hammer.
Well, I don't know. Lake Hammer possibly, but the other thing is that if we can get those, and again, we're partnering with Orange County on that, if we get those rehabbed, then it may give us the potential of having somewhere to put water if we should need to.
And, and then the other, so let's just say that, that DEP rules against us and said there, there was not one there, then our other opportunity, which becomes even a bigger nightmare, is to, is to hook into the, the system that we have with either Altamont Springs Utilities, Inc., and run it out to the plant. But now we've taken what was, right, I know, which was reclaimed water, and now we've turned it into wastewater, which means we've got to re-treat it. I mean, I don't, there's no other...
No, I, that they're, right, it's, and that, it, that there are all kinds of challenges with that, that actually, kind of what we're leaning towards, then we haven't discussed with you, is that if the Border Lake drain well falls apart, that Orange County still has the same problem there that we do as far as the Border Lake, Lake Cortez.
Right.
By rehabbing and setting them up so that they're better able to take water at Lake Pleasant and Lake Page, that that may give us the potential to be able to pump there and not use up our limited capacity at our wastewater treatment plants so that Edward doesn't have a heart attack having another plant too soon.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, again, just that, that we're doing our diligence on behalf of our people, you know. My biggest concern that I, we have to be told if this is the case, is if we continue approving building, and if that is adding to this problem, and we don't address that shame on us. So we don't want to do that. We, we want to make sure, and I, that, again, that's why there are retention ponds, things like this, so as long as you, in the know, and with the, the ability to know, you know, the, the engineering side of those things can tell us, so we can make the right decision. But we, we really want to be that advocate for all of our people. The thing that we can't do is go back in time and stop the building that's now below the floodplain, which we didn't have back then.
Correct.
And unfortunately, there are those people that are suffering those things. And, and again, I, I understand that, you know, flooding issues in, in my yard that I've dealt with as well, not to the degree that some have. So I just want to make sure that we really are, and that people understand, we really are taking this serious. And it's not just simply, we are not willing to put money there, that's not the fix. Right now, the fix is, it's quite complicated. And so as long as we're doing that part, and anything that you can give that we can help them to understand, thank you for the hard work you've been doing on that.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I guess he shouldn't have went too far, because my, my question is also in reference to the flooding. So how long are we going to wait for DEP to, to make a determination of whether the, the well is there or not? You know, how, how long are we going to keep dragging this out?
Well, that the paperwork that Orange County filed to send back into DEP was actually submitted this year. So we're hoping that by this summer, we'll have some type of answer from them. So...
Okay.
If they, they say no, then we've got to try and figure out another solution, and that there's not a lot of good ones. That we're going to do the Lake Page and Lake Pleasant, partnering with Orange County, and rehabbing those drain wells regardless. But then, if we, we're not allowed to reestablish a drain well for Border Lake, then it becomes, you know, we've got to figure out where we put the water, because right now, there's just no place to put it. And so can we, then it becomes a question of, can we be allowed to, and this would be something working with St. John's and DEP, could we pump from Border Lake and pump it over to Lake Page, for, for example? And that we don't know, because we're trying to get them to let us reestablish that. If we come up with another plan, then we don't want them to go, "Well, go do that instead." If it's, if the best solution is to reestablish Border Lake.
Well, I, I guess, we don't want, we wait till the summer and they say no, then we don't want it to be another three years before we come up with a plan as to what we're going to do, how we're going to really alleviate the problem.
And the big challenge is, is, like I said, where do you put the water? That we've got a lake there that's on the border of the two counties, and it's full. It, you know, that, where a lot of lakes have started coming down and drainage detention basins that were holding water have come down. Border Lake has not come down a whole lot, although it does appear that Lake Cortez has come down some. When you get on the west side of town, what is it, Clear?
Clear Lake.
Clear Lake. It's not down, it's still up. That a lot of the lakes on the west side of town are still up. So it's not, you know, where we're hearing from these folks in Orange County that have this problem, that they want for us to fix, and that it's been going on for years. We've still got additional issues within the, within the city as well, that Commissioner Bankson was talking about, Lake Hammer and the issues there. That when they built that lake, it was intended to be at a very, very low level. lake, it was intended to be at a very, very low level. It actually filled up quite a bit, and we're allowed to maintain that level at 79 feet. Well, the problem is, is when the lake's at 79 feet, we've actually got an inlet that's 78.8 feet. So what that means is that there's water in the bottom of that inlet all the time, and it's because the lake level's so high, and there's not a good fix for that, because we need an inlet there. We're probably going to, with some of the improvements we're looking at doing with additional inlets, we'll probably go back in with that and shallow up that inlet some, because it won't be as critical for it to be that depth. But, you know, it's not just Border Lake, it's not just Lake Cortez, it's Lake, you know, well, frankly, right now, we've got an issue over the, between our retention pond and Dream Lake, with the levels and such, and what it's doing to our system there, the connections there, so it's not just Border Lake. It's that we've got a lot of water, that, and the water is not draining off the way we would like for it to. That, I'm not a big fan of droughts, because droughts have consequences as well, but for the water table level, you know, drought would help that, it's not going to help a lot of the other things, but, you know, that, it's, while we, while we've got the water levels where they're at, we're going to continue to have the problems throughout the city, and there's just no place for us to put the water. If I pump the water from, from Lake Border, or from Border Lake to Lake Page, the people around Lake Page have a problem, right, you know, so on and so forth, but, you know, it just doesn't matter where we go, we've got these problems right now. So I don't have a good, I know what you're looking for, I can't tell you that, that, you know, the best solution would be if we can reestablish the Border Lake drain well, which will kind of take care of that immediate problem, but it's not going to take care of the rest of the problems through the city either.
And, and if they, if we do reestablish a well, I, I agree with the mayor, that that water needs to be filtered before it goes back into the aquifer.
Yes, right. And we're, we're supportive of that, and we, we've got, we, we're asking for some legislative Orange County would prefer to do it without it, because of the cost, but if we can bring some additional money to the table along with our money, then we believe we can get that, make that happen. So we'd like to put in baffle boxes and treat the water through those baffle boxes before it goes down the drain well, and clean it up a little bit from the natural state.
Yes, all right.
Thank you. Commissioner Becker?
I hadn't intended on talking on this issue, but, no, I mean, you, you don't have to stay there. No, but how the mayor, how you described it, I think is good, and then to Commissioner Bankson and Smith's point, you know, we are getting a lot of question about it, and so is it possible to just kind of stick an update, like, keep an up-to-date kind of thing on the webpage? Because what, what we struggle with is, you know, we may get these requests every third week, or we may get them every day, or we may get them every three months, and then it's always, you're going to get five different people coming to you, or four different people to get an update, so I, I don't know if you have somebody on your staff that can just eloquently kind of articulate what the mayor just described, and what, you know, the, the options are, and then, too, just keep it up to date in terms of, terms of current status.
Well, Jeff and I will work on a kind of a, kind of an initial response, and then, yeah, we, gosh, it's been months since Orange County, but, you know, they had to go back, they found records from like the 50s or something, that they, that they're waving at DEP, say, hey, here's our, here's our, you know, drainage well, and they said, well, show us, well, it's under, you know, the third lane of, you know, 436, and so how do I get to it? So, you know, that's our, that's the challenge, but, you know, the, but the reason it's worth pursuing is because the alternative is millions and not hundreds of thousands, and so that's the, that's our challenge, is, you know, and, and, I mean, I'll give Orange County, you know, the, the folks over there at the, at the utilities department, they're, they're really working hard to get us, you know, the information that we hope to, to, to use to be able to put that drainage well in, so, and then hopefully, we'll get the money from the state that will help us, you know, because it's, it's a, it's a pretty good number if we want to do what we think is right, which is some sort of filtration under normal circumstances, obviously under abnormal circumstances, we just got to, got to get the water off the, off the, the surface of the, the roads and whatnot.
And then the last thing, just, just validating that we're still on the path, 30 days would be March 9th, 45 days would be March 24th, in terms of HR director posting.
Okay. All right, Edward.
So, sales tax update. As you can see, so we, we received the numbers for February. Keep in mind, the numbers for February are actually December, they're two months, a lag, but you can see that we've been, we're 27% down than we were the prior fiscal year, and then overall, there's about $655,000 difference, if you annualize it, or just about six and a half percent down than, than where we were projection-wise, so keep watching this number. As we get later into the year, you know, COVID, the COVID numbers, as you can see, in the prior year, started hitting around May, is when we started feeling the, the revenue numbers started taking a decline, so hopefully, those revenues will be up when we get to that period, and it'll, it'll kind of, you'll kind of see a, a little better smoothing of this number or whatever, but still continues to be around that 26%, 27% over the prior year's collections each month so far, so. And then, the only thing, and I think Michael has, since he's on, he has an update, too.
Okay. So, Michael, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. You're not? I've had blood drawn in the meantime, and all sorts of stuff being happening, but... Yeah, I was just going to give a brief update on the, the DEO data breach. An email was sent out to all the staff, just giving them an update of a breach that occurred at DEO, and it was the state's servers. It was not any server, not any data held by the city. Data is held by the DEO. This is a statewide breach that has affected statewide employees. DEO is currently investigating the breach, they're asking all state employees to just keep an eye out for any suspicious activity. The investigators at DEO say the most likely information that was breached were driver's licenses, and some of the activity that's been happening are unemployment benefits are being applied for, so some members are getting notification of awarding of unemployment benefits, even though they've never made a claim for unemployment benefits. So that was the purpose of the, it was a courtesy update, we did it under the guidance of DEO. DEO probably spent sending their own updates by law in regards to the breach, but that's just the basic outline of what the breach entailed.
Any questions for Michael? I know we had five or six, I think, that, that were in that, but I would want to give a big shout-out, Dan Eagle, a friend of mine, I served with him in the legislature, is head of now the DEO, and I, as soon as the, the first report came in, we knew that employees that were on the payroll had filed for unemployment, so we knew there was a problem, so I called him up, and within 20 minutes, they've got their, you know, investigator on our case, so helps have friends in high places, so I want to give a big shout-out to DEO, that they're right on top of this thing, and, and really working hard to make sure that these, whoever's doing this doesn't, doesn't get away scot-free, so. Thank you, Michael.
All right.
Okay, Mayor's report. Look at the COVID numbers, COVID numbers are, you know, obviously, they had a blip up, and I, I think sometimes it's the sampling, but numbers are really coming down, I think the positivity rate in Orange County is less than 5%, so we're, it's, you know, it's in the, it's in the good, good range now, we're really making progress. I do want to let you know that also at your desk is the State of Florida, the governor's executive order, and for the folks out there, they've added some additional people that can now receive the vaccine, and so I just want to mention those, obviously, all the people that are over 65 have been getting them, healthcare personnel with direct patient contact, here's the new ones, the K through 12 school employees that are 50 years of age or older, so any teachers or, or anybody in the school system that are over 50 years old now are eligible to go get their, their COVID shots, and sworn law enforcement officers, same 50 years of age or older, and firefighters, 50 years of age or older, all now eligible to go get their COVID vaccine. I don't know if you've seen it, but starting Sunday, I know it's on our website now, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there will be, you have the opportunity to go get, it's a first-come, first-served at Kelly Park, they'll be doing 3,000 vaccinations a day, so four days, starting on Sunday, first-come, first-served, so I would suggest anybody that's going to be using Rock Springs Road, you be, you know, careful, because going down Rock Springs Road, if, if I'm, I envision, you know, miles worth of backup down Rock Springs Road, or even going back off toward Kelly Park, so, but anyway, 3,000 a day will be at Kelly Park. I think, you know, in the next couple of days, we'll have some good news about Apopka, so as far as COVID vaccinations, but we're still working on that. Jeans Wednesday, just so you know, we're city employees, I want to thank all the city employees, we have a gentleman in dispatch that's got, got cancer and going through treatments and whatnot, and the outpouring of city employees to help this, this gentleman out are, were really heartwarming, and I know he appreciates it, so thank you to all employees on Jeans Wednesday. We have another employee in finance that we're, this March, which is, it's, we do, it's, you know, Jeans Wednesday, we're going to be raising money for this, the lady in finance, who's, who's also combating COVID, or, excuse me, cancer at this time, so we, you know, keep them in your prayers, hopefully, we'll see them back soon enough.
And there's jeans every Wednesday?
Yes, and it's $5, and so we, we, they've done, they've done really well, I'm, I'm real proud of the, the staff here. Last up, barbecue competition and hometown concert, I know John Anson's working hard on barbecue, trying to get the teams in here. Hometown concert's been set, other than, we've got to make sure that Jeremiah's is going to be our, start out our concert. Brittany Callahan is on board, we've also got the Elks, Elks Lodge is going to be doing a cornhole tournament out there. Wekauka High School, depending on what they can and can't do, are they going to be doing some cooking demonstrations, as well as selling some of their own barbecue sauce and hot sauce, obviously have some other, other, you know, grills that, you know, demo grills and whatnot for people to take a look at, and then that'll be with Chef Bates, so yeah, great guy, if you've ever met him, you know, I sit on the culinary board at Wekauka High School, and he is one energetic guy, and so you'll, you'll enjoy meeting him. So, looking up, everything's, things are really moving great, we're, we're so excited to be a part of Apopka, and with that, we will close the City Council.